I call to order the June 4th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council Redevelopment Agency and Financing Authority. We're going to ask our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight is going to be led by Roland Eichel.
(inaudible)
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 All right, the council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our legal counsel regarding one item of substantial exposure to litigation and to confer with our labor negotiators regarding negotiations first with Local 39 and second with the department, regarding the department heads, managers, specialists, professionals, and confidential group. And no action was taken on any of those items. It's going to bring us to Item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. As is noted in our agenda, we are prohibited by state law from taking action or having a discussion on items that are brought up under Item 1A, but it is an important opportunity for a public forum. We do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other item tonight to please fill out one of the yellow cards that's available near the front door and to turn the card into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone gets a chance to be heard. And so did that end, we asked that all the comments be limited to no more than three minutes each. There's also a flip chart in front of the clerk and that simply indicates which agenda item the council is currently considering. We take the speaking request cards up to the conclusion of the staff report on any particular item. Once the council questions or the public testimony is begun, we don't take any additional speaking requests. So if you're here and you want to speak about a specific item, the sooner the better, but certainly by the closure of the staff report for submitting the card. We also recognize that for a lot of folks, speaking in public is not their thing and they're here and it causes some anxiety and some nervousness and we're all a big community. So we do ask that there not be any boos or cat calls or even applause or other demonstrations and we try to maintain some civility in the chambers. So with that, we have no written request to speak on Item 1A, so we're going to proceed Item 1B, which is council communications. Are there any reports or other communications this evening? Councilmember Sandin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I realize the last meeting that both you and Councilmember Ledesma reported on cap-to-cap, but since I was absent, I wanted to follow up with some of the actions that I was able to, or the activities I was able to participate in. In addition to attending and participating in the briefing that you arranged with the White House Executive Office folks, I also participated with the Civic Amenities Group and the Food and Agriculture Committees. I participated in a tour of their Verizon Center, looking at civic amenities and the impact on downtown DC and also participated in a session with the Planning Commission and local developers about their look at tax policy and art and culture districts and worked also with folks looking at connecting civic amenities with transportation and bike trails. And then I also worked the next day with, and visited, the Union Market and looked at how civic amenities and food and ag activities can combine together and work. And Mary Kimball, who is very involved with the Urban Farm Program here in our city, led that session. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Yeah. Councilmember Ledesma?
Thank you. Last, this past Monday, which was the second, I attended the City School Two-by-Two Committee Meeting here next door at City Hall. Myself and Adam Menke, the board president, met. On the agenda, we had a couple of things. One was an update on their career tech ed program, which they are developing and moving forward on many fronts to incorporate more career tech education opportunities for high school kids, including a culinary academy, which they're looking at, which has been great. And they are starting to receive some funding for that, which was for some of the science-related paths that they are developing, so that was good news. We also heard, speaking of Mary Kimball, received an update and a briefing from her. Since they've opened up, since the Center for Land-Based Learning has begun using the fifth and C as the urban farming, they've been getting several requests around the city for active lots to farm, including from the schools. So it was an appropriate time for them to come in, give a briefing, and get some feedback from the school district. So hopefully, they can turn into an opportunity for them as well to help young farmers or want to be farmers. And finally, the city did provide an update on the active transportation program and the grants we're going for, including the expansion and the overpass on the Sycamore Trail, which is welcome news by the school district. They're very enthused about that piece, where we're cleaning up and possibly putting an overpass over Highway 50 for pedestrian, bike ped users getting to and from school safely. So that was welcome news, as well as the improvements along the high school area on Linden. They're very enthusiastic and they'll be watching with us to see those grants come in in our favor in August. So that's all I had for today.
Mayor Protem Johansson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Old County Housing Met on May 22nd and we had a number of presentations of appreciation to a number of the employees, 15, over the course of the meeting. And it's really, I mean, this happens maybe once a quarter at that agency and we've really a lot of good staff that are working there and really under a lot of pressure now because housing has been consistently underfunded and it continues to be. And the item of more of substance was the, we're entering a letter of intent for solar generation on all the Old County housing properties. So we're going to be negotiating, looking at that project and negotiating it over the next couple of months.
Thank you. Prior to this meeting, we had a meeting of the Port Commission here in this chambers and we had just a couple of items. Most noteworthy was our budget, 2014-2015 budget. And the port is doing very well this year with some of the land use changes and that is, we are starting to see some leases come through and our strategy of having a stronger business plans that were focused on the real estate portion of the port has really come to fruition and we're starting to see some improvements there. So that's what we talked about this afternoon. Thank you.
All right. I had a couple of the Delta Protection Commission. We met a week and a half ago. Our primary work at the moment, as it has been for 10 years, is working on the governor's water conveyance proposal and the Bay Delta Conservation Plan. And we're preparing our final comments on the BDCP. And so the bulk of our meeting was focused on figuring out what that strategy ought to be. We're actually going to come back later. I pushed pretty hard with Supervisor Viegas to have our comments be more specific about what alternatives we wanted to see happen. The council is aware of some concern about sort of open-ended calls that any alternative should be on the table. It's emotionally satisfying for folks who are opposed to BDCP, like we have expressed concerns as well. But I wanted to be sure that we weren't opening the door to the Garmendi Plan being moved forward. So we're going to come back in a special meeting of the commission to take that topic up. But also the draft that our staff had prepared around mitigation measures, the Delta Protection Commission is getting more sophisticated than it has in the past. And so they prepared a draft set of comments on the BDCP environmental work with suggested mitigations for the BDCP. But they were, the mitigations that they've scoped at are really weak in the sense that they're, you know, okay, the BDCP would wipe out all recreation for the following eight miles. So what the state should do is convene an advisory committee of stakeholders to talk about what they should do. That's not, that may be the ultimate answer that ends up in the EIR, but we should be, as the Delta region, articulating much stronger mitigations without regard to how much they cost. That's our role as the Delta stakeholders and ultimately as the city as well, is not to figure out what is reasonable as a mitigation, but simply what is the mitigation to overcome the impact that's being identified. And so those are going to be the main focuses that return at the commission meeting. The comment period on the EIR and the BDCP have all been extended and so we, I think we're likely to, we're going to meet either later, have a special meeting later this month or at the end of July. So that was the principal issue there. Then the Board of the Sacramento Council of Governments met last week and we had a couple of major items. Our biggest debate was about the state cap and trade revenue strategy. As I think the council is aware, the governor has proposed a strategy for how to spend the state's largely one-time revenues that are accruing from the sale of credits in the cap and trade program. And the governor has, you know, an expansive proposal for that. The various parts of the legislature have come up with alternatives. They all provide for some amount of funding for things that are related to the sustainable community strategies that each of the regions either have or are adopting. Because those are so central to achieving the climate change emission reductions that the state, that is the point of the cap and trade program in the first place. But they vary in how much of the money goes to the locals and the regions and in what ways and for what priorities. And so we had a long debate about it, about how to maximize the amount of those dollars, frankly, that come to our region and also in ways to make sure that we're actually advancing those goals. It was a tough debate because, you know, the board is a diverse board and there are quite a few folks that don't believe that climate change is happening. But we ultimately, you know, I think we got them to the point where, look, regardless of whether you think climate change is happening, we know the money is happening. That is undisputed, that's undisputed. The money is coming into the state account and regardless of what you think about it, we should be maximizing our ability to apply for it. It's one of the component pieces of that funding strategy that all of the legislative and the governor's proposals include is priority for the disadvantaged areas of the state as defined by that horrible EnviroScan tool that we heard about a couple of weeks ago in terms of, you know, where it's more of a measure of poverty than it is of, and of sort of ambient conditions in rivers than it is in actual environmental exposure. But one reason why, at least for me, I've been a little less vocal about why that tool's so bad is that because we rank highly on it, we're more competitive to get money from those cap and trade revenues. So until that's done, they can fix the tool later, but strategically, it's valuable for us to be able to leverage some resources out of those funds. So that was the bulk of the Secoc discussion at this, in that session. Tomorrow, we're going to be taking up the next MTP. And this is going to be the first MTP that really looks at flood, floodplain management in detail and the focus of our next review of the MTP is going to include some more fine-grained analysis about where growth should occur in the region based on real floodplain stuff. So the last MTP, we did start to incorporate floodplain maps, but at a very gross, at a very gross level. And now our intention is to make the MTP really line up well with our state and federal planning efforts with respect to where we should be targeting development and growth in the region based on both existing floodplains and where there are, where we have a reasonable chance of achieving 100-year or 200-year urban flood protection levels in the region. So that will be, that's proceeding next. All right. So there's no other reports. Item 1C is appointments to boards and commissions and we have none of those appointments this evening. So we're going to proceed to our Item 1D, which is recognition of the accomplishments of the West Sacramento College Prep students. I want to actually start, though, and put this in some context. Because this is the outgrowth of the work that we've been doing that the council, I think, is aware of originally with our partnership with Google that we launched earlier this year on a program called West Sacramento Get Your Business Online. This is part of a national initiative of Google. They provided a lot of tools and support and collateral in order for this initiative to move forward to help expand the online presence of businesses in communities just like ours. And for folks who are used to using online commerce, it may not seem obvious, but the Google data indicates that a large proportion, maybe a majority, of businesses in the country are not online. And so their theory was they wanted to partner with cities and other organizations to help reach businesses that aren't online or don't have an effective online presence in order to improve that so that they can be better parts of local economic prosperity. So they've provided, Google, as part of this initiative, has provided free training in how to use web development tools. They've provided free hosting of websites for businesses that want to get their toe in the water and then branded content to help us to promote Get Your Business Online here in West Sacramento. So we began the work to implement that, this initiative with Google in partnership with some of the significant economic development agencies and organizations in the region with the Sacramento Small Business Development Center, with the Women's Business Center, with the Stockton Boulevard Business Information Center, SCORE, and our own chamber, the West Sacramento Chamber of Commerce, to bring this initiative to life. And so Get Your Business Online Week was March 24th to 28th. Google produced a series of webinars and other resources for businesses to grow in communities like ours. And I'm not sure, so we launched that initiative with an all-day event for businesses in our community and it went from nine in the morning, four o'clock in the afternoon. And we had a great turnout. Folks from a lot of local companies and startup companies and long-running ones came mainly from our city, but this became one of the regional anchor events for the Google Get Your Business Online project. And so we had folks from all over the place, but you might recognize in the bottom right-hand corner, that's Nancy and Alan Candy. Nancy, a former school board member and library board member and they're starting in their, for their second act, they're starting a new business. And we had a lot of folks like that who were not online and did not know how to do this. So Google's theory about the need for this sort of initiative really, really played out in this work. So it was a free workshop for all the businesses that came, how to, either how to get online or how to expand your online presence. We had over 50 business owners in attendance for all the workshops and 12 of the businesses got online for the very, very first time. And they were enthusiastic, stayed through the whole thing. We're very excited about it and really had a broad reach. And I think Google was happy with our efforts, but it was definitely a significant, significant step. And I wanted to acknowledge Ian Winbrot, who I think Babs knows, but I think she's, Councilmember Sandin knows, but she's the only one. So he's working, he's been working with me on this and several other projects in order to bring the partnership to life. So we then created the West Sacramento GYBO, GetYourBusinessOnline.com website, using the same Google platform to provide some, an example of the functionality about how it works and also to give folks access to the resources that Google has, provide some testimonials and showcase some of the future events, had office hours and other direct interaction, then participated at a chamber luncheon. Ian kind of led the work there with some partner, Chris White and others, to do some targeted outreach to start laying the foundation for an opportunity to have students here in our community who have been trained and certified to be able to help businesses improve their online presence and also create project-based learning opportunities for the students that relate back to their curriculum and what they're learning in, you know, during the daytime in school. So that created this Future Ready project and as the council knows, that Future Ready is our, is an initiative we've created in the community with the school, with our partners in the school district and the chamber and then others in the community to help to strengthen college and career readiness for kids in our community through projects just like this. So this pilot project was a way to leverage the Google project in a way that connected to young people that as far as we know is, no one else is doing this in the country as part of this Google initiative. So Future Ready approached West Sacramento Early College Preparatory School here in our community with Denise Seals from the chamber. And youth from the school took, you know, nine hours of training on how to get the skills and the techniques, building what they already knew from school to, but getting the skills to be able to help small businesses and nonprofits and other projects in how to make themselves more visible online. West Sacramento College Prep is, they really embrace project-based learning, making the connections between the classroom and the real world and aligning it with the common core and everything else. And so they were a natural partner for this work. And it's a community of students and teachers that are really, you know, motivated and enthusiastic about making stuff happen. So the class, David Abramson was the one who taught the training. He's from Davis. And then Ian, our coordinator, helped put the whole thing together in conjunction with the gentleman who led the pledge tonight, Roland Eichel, who's a teacher at West Sacramento College Prep. So the six students who completed that training, and it meant staying after school for hours and hours and hours on Fridays. It was a real commitment in order to learn how, not just how to use the tools, but how to use the Google's tools to improve online presence, but then how to transmit that knowledge, right? To learn, not just by studying it, but to learn how to teach others how to use it. And so they learned how to use Google AdWords, Google Places, Google Alerts, LinkedIn, the whole thing. And then the second class focused on how to help local businesses benefit from that. And the third class focused on backend development and the frontend web development using WordPress. So really important, useful, and marketable skills in the workplace as well. So the students really demonstrated a lot of commitment in order to make this work and are working with, you know, with businesses to make this, make this into a reality for them. So it's been a great, great partnership with students, with businesses, with some of our community partners that is, you know, it's becoming one of these classic West Sacramento quadruple bottom line, you know, work, efforts that has really advanced the community. So, and it wouldn't have been possible without the, without the school and without the students and without Denise Seals. I don't know if Denise is here tonight, but all the partners who made it happen. They are also working next on the West Sacramento Farmers Market website. They're going to bring that into the modern age with all the skills that they've learned as well. So we wanted to present the students and strike with both a mayoral proclamation and Future Ready's got certificates for them as well. So if I could ask ours...
Do you need a motion?
No, it's a mayoral one. We didn't have time.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. So I am going to read this proclamation to the record. These are the students, we're missing one, but these are the students who have kind of launched this effort and I think are making a huge difference in our community and they're getting a big head start on their, on being ready for college and career and for success in our community. We're really proud of them. So, "Whereas the purpose of Future Ready is to spark and support projects which engage West Sacramento youth in civic improvement, build college and career readiness for local high school students through link learning, give youth meaningful experience with entrepreneurship and employment, and promote youth competency in urban transportation modes. And whereas Future Ready partnered with the West Sacramento Chamber of Commerce and West Sacramento Early College Preparatory Charter School to implement a nine-hour course to teach youth in West Sacramento the skills and techniques necessary to assist local businesses, nonprofits, and projects in making themselves more visible online. And whereas West Sacramento Early College Preparatory Charter School, also known as West Sacramento Prep, is a tuition-free public school and is designed to provide exceptional learning opportunities that will empower students to excel inside and outside of school. And whereas by preparing all students for success in college and beyond in an increasingly global workplace, West Sacramento Prep aims at creating a community of motivated, creative, lifelong learners. And whereas the administration and staff of West Sacramento Prep have fostered a learning environment that promotes the innovation and creativity necessary to prepare students for lifelong success in our educational system and workforce. And whereas six West Sacramento Prep students have completed the full nine-hour course and demonstrated the skills and competence necessary to build and expand an effective online presence for businesses, nonprofits, and projects in West Sacramento and beyond." Now therefore, the mayor of the city of West Sacramento does hereby recognize West Sacramento Prep students Eduardo Castaneda, Kevin Duvan Marino Castaneda, Cesar Luis Cortez, Davis William Montano, Roman Eduardovich Skachkov...
Skachkov.
Skachkov. If I say it slowly enough, it works. And Eric Mauricio Sarate for their exemplary problem-solving skills, creative thinking, and passion for learning, as well as their participation in completion of the Future Ready pilot project. Gentlemen, thank you so much for paving the way for the great work that you're doing in school, in the community, and for helping our local businesses be so much more successful. Thank you.
(applause)
So we have the proclamations we'll give to Mr. Eichel for the school to have. Then we have individual Future Ready certificates of completion for each of you individually. So congratulations.
While the mayor is working his way back to the DS, I, number one, certainly I'd like to thank these young men and their teachers for doing what they are doing. This says a lot, really a lot, for West Sacramento. I mean, with young people like this having the energy and the capabilities of doing what they're doing, it just goes to show that this community is going to be very well-prepared for whatever endeavors or whatever else happens. And it's through these kinds of things that really should raise the comfort level of our citizenry, that these young people are really going to step up and assist the city of West Sacramento as far as continuing to grow and continuing to prosper. And I want to thank you guys. Thank you.
Protem Johansson?
Yeah, I think it's really a great program and you all have gotten a lot of really good experience, but I couldn't help notice that there's a bunch of guys up there. One of the issues that we have, particularly in the Silicon Valley and software development, it really is male-dominated. So I would totally encourage you all, any women that you know, to get involved with that, because this is really a stepping stone of software development, what you're doing. You're getting kind of your hands wet and doing some preliminary kind of development work, but that's where the interest grows. So if there's any women out there, please get involved with this. They do need women in that field badly.
Yeah, I thank you so much for, Mr. Kristoff and Mr. Johansson, for the comments about the students. They've done a fantastic job. And I was in the GYBO session with the businesses and I'm just used to being on the web all the time, but even for Nancy and Alan, just as an example, when, the moment when their website went live for just a second and they felt like they were finally in the 21st century and saw the possibilities of what this presence could mean for their own prosperity, for the business that they'd always dreamed of having. And I saw that over and over and over again and these young people are helping to make that into a reality. It's really powerful for the, for those individual businesses and for the community and for the kids and for animating and bringing to life the curriculum every day. So really fantastic project. I also want to acknowledge, I mean, it's, I'm always astonished pleasantly that, so tonight Catherine Jeffrey, from the president of Sacramento City College, is here. She's a member of the board of West Sacramento Prep, of West Sacramento Prep. She's been involved with it from the very beginning. But it says so much about the commitment of Sacramento City College and her as an educator and as a professional to take, you know, she's got Listerial's board meetings and a million other things to be at, to come here simply to sit with her colleagues and the teachers and the team from the school and with the six students and to show the support of the college. That's one of, that's one of the things that makes West Sacramento Prep so great, is the deep, deep, deep commitment and passion and support by Catherine and her colleagues. So thank you so much. All right. So we're going to go on to our consent agenda. You're all welcome to stay as long as you want to. I promise you, it gets much less interesting now, but thank you. All right. So we're at the consensual agenda, which is Items 2 through 10. And we've had, yeah, no adjustments. So any items on consent to remove or any item for separate...
Mr. Mayor, I just need to note that I need to abstain from Item 4.
All right. So we'll pull that and vote on it separately, but leave it, we'll leave it on consent, but it'll be a separate vote.
Thank you. And I would also like to ask that we pull Item 9, just for some brief discussion questions.
Okay. Any others?
Seven.
Mr. Kristoff, any? Any others?
Seven and nine.
All right. So Item 7 is consideration of Resolution 14-33 regarding a minor revision to the wireless telecommunications facility policy. Mr. Mayor Protem Johansson?
All right. So I've gone through this. So basically, our wireless telecommunications policy is to make sure that we're locating these towers in nonsensitive areas. And as we start to develop out residential, we're going to have the conflict between residential and these towers. And I think that's one of the things we need to look at. So I guess I'm a little concerned. So I went through the Planning Commission, was looking at this as keeping it as a two-to-one ratio. So meaning, you know, I guess the space, the width away from the tower has to be twice the height of the tower, essentially.
Yeah, that's what the policy requires as a minimum presently.
And there was some discussion that the Planning Commission to make it the one-to-one, which it basically... which would basically decrease the size, possibly make it closer to residential maybe or maybe not. So, I guess I'm just a little, I want to know the interaction between what we can and can't do. I think one of the problems with a two-to-one would be if there's no land sufficient to do that, then potentially under federal law, the providers have as a matter of right to put these things pretty much everywhere. So, we're kind of setting ourselves up to variance or some other process. So, I just want to know why the planning commission, initial recommendation wasn't carried through to this.
Well, we discussed this item, you know, at a couple of different planning commission meetings over the last, you know, few months. And because we had a sort of a real-world situation that sort of prompted some additional review of the policy, because we, at least on the first blush, we had some conflicts, you know, with the policy that was written based on some projects that have been proposed. So, the planning commission did wish to, you know, seek some form of resolution because we seem to be somewhat of at a stalemate regarding those two projects. So, you know, we considered some options in terms of changing that setback requirement, you know, to maybe to one-to-one. And there were a couple of other options that were put forth to the planning commission. But in the end, when they last took this up last month, they opted to keep the policy as-is, retain that two-to-one minimum setback, and that they will consider projects sort of on a case-by-case basis as they come forward against the policy, you know, noting that the undercurrent here is that to the extent federal law may, to the extent federal law preempts any provision in our local policy, that particular provision may not be enforced. And so, the planning commission was, didn't want necessarily make a change to lower the setback requirement, noting because that would apply, you know, citywide. And we felt that the matter at hand was somewhat of an anomaly. And so, they didn't want to sort of have any, necessarily any unintended consequences, you know, down the road for any future projects that we really couldn't foresee right now. So, in the end, the planning commission elected to recommend to your council that the policy remain, you know, the same with that setback requirement, the two-to-one, but then to add this additional language in there to sort of clarify, you know, how they'll handle things in the event that there's any federal preemptions.
All right. In terms of two-to-one area that's left in the city, obviously there's quite a bit now because we're not developed out. But as we develop out, isn't this going to be a problem?
Well, it could be a problem if people, if, you know, they continue to propose some type of tower. There are many other options to consider to provide wireless service and we anticipate that we will see more in that. The policy sort of spells out our, the city's preferences in terms of what type of facility would go in. As we are closer to some of our more single-family neighborhoods and some of our more urban and emerging neighborhoods, you know, we feel that the microcell application will be much more viable and desirable, you know, to do so that we won't have a setback, you know, problem for that type of application. You know, in the scenario where we have a relatively rural area, you know, low density, the microcell is really not as viable.
Do we have the authority to dictate a tower or microcell?
Our policy does specify what our sort of preference is in terms of type of facility. And aesthetics is the principal area that we do retain authority over. And so, generally speaking, we try to look for the best option that fits the neighborhood but serves the need as well. So, that's why when we came back even before the council, the last time we took this matter up, we wanted to sort of strengthen that stuff on the microcell particular application and anticipation of that being desirable, particularly in West Capitol Avenue and Bridge District and other areas like that.
But I mean, that's an aesthetic argument. Technologically, can we dictate if, say someone comes in, we don't have any land that they can put it in because of the two-to-one ratio. So, basically allows federal law to preempt what we're doing. Can, we use as an aesthetic basis to distinguish between and mandate basically a microcell versus a tower?
Well, aesthetics is the area that we remain control over. Part of where the federal law comes in is where they, where a carrier may have a considerable gap in coverage. And so, we wouldn't, if that's the case, we would need to permit some type of application within reason that would allow them to fill in that particular gap in coverage. So, one of the things we look for with all these projects is alternatives that to, you know, whatever the particular proposal is, you know, to show what different options could work for the carrier to accomplish their mission. And so, we haven't seen a microcell application, you know, yet, but we certainly expect to see one, you know, in fairly short order, but perhaps not in the more rural area of town.
Yeah, I guess, you know, just, I mean, it's just a comment that my concern, you know, with having something that's too restrictive, which two-to-one is a lot more restrictive than one-to-one, you may be just inviting possible federal preemption in areas where you don't want it, you know. And I just want to make sure that that's been well thought out when we do this.
Yeah. The two-to-one is what we put into the most updated version of the policy about a year ago now. That came out of the discussion with the ultimate project that was built down at Jefferson, the water tank project, which is where the two-to-one notion first, you know, came to pass. And that generally has been workable until this most recent situation we've had. You know, these projects were really the first ones that have come up since the council approved the policy, you know, revisions last 2012, I believe it was. So, planning commission in the end debated this, but did wish to retain the two-to-one and will consider projects, again, as a case-by-case basis as they go forward if there's any conflicts with that particular provision of the policy.
Mr. Kristoff.
Hey, could we shorten the tower by 10 feet or five feet or whatever it is to make it so it's two-to-one?
It's within the realm of possibility. They're trying to, obviously trying to accommodate, you know, as many carriers as they can. And our policy certainly is a big current through it is colocation. They're obviously trying to have certain coverage objectives. And they usually, you know, the lowest one would be about 60 feet. And then they sort of go up about 10 feet each, you know, from there. So, we do think that around 100 feet for about a three or four carrier facility is pretty much what they will need.
So, okay, the staff report says there are two competing sites. One site has a difference of how many feet? Should the pole be shorter? Or, and then the other one has, evidently one fits, sounds like it, one fits pretty good, except it's just a little, it doesn't quite make the two-to-one. And the other one is a long ways from making the two-to-one. Is that correct?
It is true. The two projects we're working on currently, one is definitely closer to sort of meeting the, you know, the two-to-one setback more so than the other one. But presently, neither do make the two-to-one.
So, those would be the circumstances that the planning commission would negotiate or you guys would negotiate. If we take planning commission's recommendation?
Yes. Those will proceed to the, you know, planning commission for their, you know, formal hearing and review. And we reviewed against our policy and to the extent that we remain compliant with federal law based on the peculiarities of the projects and their locations.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't envy you. I mean, we, the last project we had, there was a lot of outrage about it. And so, we adopted a policy and now you're implementing our policy. And this one, you know, the stuff that's pending may not have the same level of opposition, but we need a policy that can survive both kinds of circumstances. And so, I think, and it's clear the planning commission grappled with a lot of these issues. And so, personally, I'm supportive of their ultimate judgment. I think we need to stay compliant with federal law, but within that scope, we need to be moving carriers to microcells and we need to be encouraging colocation and not have a lot of big towers. There are plenty of other, you know, kind of urban cities that don't have lots of raw land for giant towers with a two-to-one ratio either. So, we would not be the first one in the country. So, I'm less concerned about triggering the federal piece, but we definitely shouldn't trigger, you know, shouldn't trigger it. But it's clear that both you and the commission have taken, you know, taking account of that, both in the policy, but particularly in the way that it's implemented. So, I'm supportive of the item. All right. Thank you. Item nine is consideration of a report on the state water bond legislation. Mr. Ledesma?
Thank you. First of all, I just wanted to thank Paulina for pulling this together for a couple of reasons. One is, is we have all become engaged in either the, Mr. Kristoff is our lead at the Regional Water Association and I'm at the Water Resources Association. We keep hearing and throughout our travels or talks with other regional electeds, the water bond, the legislation that's around it has become increasingly a topic of conversation. And it was in fact a topic of conversation at a meeting that councilmember Sandine and I attended in Washington DC, which was sort of pulled together while we were there among other electeds. And there's a follow-up meeting on that on, I think it's tomorrow, where again, they're starting to bring together these ideas. So, I appreciate you briefing us on where we are on this because I think as a council, we need to kind of just make sure we're aware of kind of where we stand and what's out there. I did have a couple of questions and it might be even that we need to come back to it in terms of a certain area that I just don't, again, just coming to some of the understanding. So, we listed here a number of four bills that are currently in the legislature going through that are proposed to take up the water bond. It doesn't sound like at this, at that point, we're not expecting, nothing's pending. We're not, we're far from kind of having any resolution on any one.
That's my understanding at this point. It's for the county, the WOLK bill, SB 848 is the one that they're supporting and it seems to have the most movement, but a lot of it is still, a lot of chatter, but nothing really solid right now.
Right. And that's the one I kind of keep getting steered towards. So, I appreciate kind of listing out the areas. One of the things that you put into your staff report was that Yolo County is part of the Delta Counties Coalition and that it's, it sort of has the three principles you outlined. And the WOLK bill lives up to those three principles. Is that, and it's just my knowledge, trying to understand, is West Sacramento, obviously we're part of Yolo County, are we part of that coalition? And I'm just not, do we have any other information on kind of what it's promulgating at this point or what it's advocating for?
Well, we do work with the county staff that are part of that coalition. I don't know that we're necessarily, you know, county's a member. The city isn't a member as itself, is my understanding. I'm still kind of learning a lot about the process.
Yeah. We're not. We're not. It's only the five Delta Counties and Yolo's barely a member.
Well, that was kind of like, sort of a next question. But again, you know, another organization that is part of this meeting tomorrow, which we'll need to reconcile and I'll ask staff to keep working with them. And I want to kind of defer some of this to Mr. Kristoff because he's been so involved in water and flood control over the years. There's a North State Water Association, or North State Water Alliance, excuse me, which is sort of promoting this regional look at all the water agencies and water districts. And this is something we're going to have to keep our eye on. The one thing that, again, as we dig into this, that came up this week as a result of actually the work we do in the Yolo Natural Heritage Program we're working on through the NCCP and ACP application or planning we're going through, is the funding, the WOLK bill does support, has the most funding allocated for the Water Conservation Board, which is a big part of how that entity gets funded. The GPA we're involved with gets funded. So, we're supportive of that, but we're also very wary of the fact that the, all the conservancies that are also listed get way more funding than that one. And that's, I knew Mr. Kristoff would laugh at that one because they're very powerful organizations. But again, these are kind of things that we're, our staff, that we can kind of keep our eye on and sort of make, keep, maybe occasional details or events go forward. We probably should kind of make sure we're all briefed. So, we're all sort of singing from the same tune to make sure we're protecting West Sacramento's interests for some of the same reasons the mayor pointed out on the BDCP issues going on. He's on the Delta Protection Commission, that we want to make sure we're not getting involved in something that counters maybe a view we're having somewhere else. So, I'd appreciate you kind of keeping this as a regular update item maybe or as events warrant. But thank you. I appreciate the briefing.
Thank you.
Paulina, is there any one bill that we are supporting over another bill?
Well, generally speaking, we're supporting SB 848 as just as the county has supported it. Prior to...
But it needs tweaking.
Right, yeah. And that's why it's, they support it as, you know, the general concept of it. There isn't any one bill that I'm aware of that the city has ever stepped out and supported. This is still a new area to me, so I'm really learning about the bills in general. And I don't think we've really taken a stand on any one bill.
Well, even if we are going, okay, let's just say for argument's sake, we support 848. That's the WOLK bill. Some of the tweaking that I see is, and the council really, we haven't gone through the debate that we probably will need to go through before making a recommendation. But one of the things that I see is water storage is an absolute critical component of this, even more so than WOLK has talks about or proposes. So, I mean, that would be something that I would, you know, try to interject to you that I would like to see more of. So, you know, just to give you my two cents worth.
Yeah. So, to me, there's, I'm glad for the item and I think it's helpful. All of us are being asked at all these other agencies that we represent the city on to vote to endorse this set of principles or that sort of principles or that organization's view or this organization's views or that bill or that bill. And it's a problem because I don't even know what's in most of those things or how they relate to one another. And so, this, I think, this is helpful. I think we need to, we will need to evolve over time to get more clarity about where, what our core interests are. But I, to me, there's two levels here. There's one of the, is the level of issue that Mr. Kristoff just described, like what do we think about storage and that sort of thing. And that's important, although I suspect there's not a lot of people waiting for our opinion on that. But the other, and during, when the first version of this, you know, this policy debate, when was it, three years ago now? Or long, oh, yeah, 2010. So, from 2010, we were super active on the water bonds. We were, you know, as small cities go, we were probably the most influential player on the water bond, but not over those issues. It was because that was married with some stuff with the Delta that would have trampled on our land use authority. So, to me, that's, the most important thing is to make sure that we are carefully analyzing the actual legislative proposals to make sure that we're not, there's not, you know, little tricks here and there that have massive impacts on us. And virtually everything that's related to the Delta or water bonds so far has. So, that's, I think, more than the big architecture, what really, and how much money everybody's getting and all that stuff, which nobody, we're not going to have a lot of influence on. But if there's stuff in there that would affect us in a significant way in every other proposal, you know, four years ago, and when the Delta stuff came, it did, that's, we should definitely, we need to be on that and we need to kind of hold our powder for that. I don't want, personally, I don't want to endorse a bunch of bills and then find out, you know, in a month or two ago, there's some provision that we need to really, we need to use our capital, our political capital just on fighting that. So, I think we, this is a good start, but we should get to a point where we are, and maybe you already have, but we should be at a point where we have a sense of what our, what our really fine-grained interests are, you know, what language is actually being circulated that gives life to these provisions. Because the language can often have, you know, really, you know, pernicious effects on the, on our ability to do business.
And I appreciate you saying that because that's exactly the point that I'm after is that we're talking to other agencies that have their different set of interests. And they're asking us to sign on or have a viewpoint on this. And the minute we say that sounds great, and then the devil's in the details and you'll see a proposal come from XYZ Alliance who says, hey, WestAC bought into this. They run come from XYZ Alliance, who says, "Hey, West SAC bought in on this, they ran the whole way, but I didn't read that fine print in the legislation that got thrown into that bill," which now everybody's falling behind. And so I think that's where I'm cautious about this, because I'm just, I'm like you, I'm like new to it, and this is not my core competency, but it is, it needs to be, because of the exact reasons the mayor points out, that we're being asked to speak to this and have an opinion on this. And it's just, careful we're understanding the ramifications of the things we're promoting.
Right. And we, and when it's something that is directly relevant to us, we have influence. I mean, even during that last, during the last water bond, and there was one committee hearing when Senator Shumber, like, looked at the camera and said, "And don't worry, I've taken care of West SAC, Mayor Cabalt," and I wasn't even in the building. But I mean, there's definitely, I mean, if, if we need to, we have the ability to affect it. So, so we shouldn't squander the opportunity to have, to have a voice if we need, if there's something there that affects us.
Right.
Yeah, I think one of the other big things, I think, one of the things I think the mayor's alluding to, and that is, we really don't need, excuse me, some other, or newly created commission having some kind of planning influence over West Sacramento. And that was one of the things that we were very concerned with, with the first proposals. And, you know, I just don't need another hoop for either our staff or our development community to have to jump through in order to satisfy some water agency, or some water thing thought up by the politicians in Sacramento. So I want to be very, I'm very, excuse me, very leery of that.
And even the Delta Counties, I mean, they're all on the Delta Commission, and so we spend a lot of time with, together, and they have a lot of legitimate concerns, and I share many of them, but their interests aren't the same as ours, and, you know, collectively. So, and, and they tend to be a little shrill. So not very nuanced strategically, so, and so we just, we, well, we continue to partner closely with Yolo County, makes a lot of sense. We should be, you know, we should definitely be looking out for our own interests as well. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you for the feedback.
All right. Any other questions on consent? All right, then. Is there a motion on the consent agenda minus item four?
Second.
Moved, moved by Mr. LaDesmond, second by Mr. Kristoff. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? During that motion carries, we'll turn to the second part of the consent agenda, item four. Is there a motion on that? Moved by Mr. Mayor Protime Johannesen, and second by Councilmember Sandin. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Let the record reflect that Mr. LaDesmond recused himself from that item, and the motion carries forward to zero. But that brings us then to item 11, which is a public hearing in consideration of Resolutions 14-36, 14-37, and 14-38 approving the Infrastructure Financing Plan and various actions to establish Infrastructure Financing District Number One in the Bridge District. And just a note, at our desks is a memo from the city manager regarding item 11 as well.
Well, tonight's a major milestone in the formation of Infrastructure Financing District Number One in the Bridge District. This will be the city's first IFD, as we call it. And, and tonight, you're going to be asked to take a number of actions. The procedure will be a little bit unusual. You're going to be asked to consider Resolution 1436, which approves the Infrastructure Financing Plan. And then, after you approve that resolution, there will be a public hearing. And then, once the public hearing is closed, we'll ask you to go back and approve Resolutions 1437. It deals with the appropriation limit for the district, and calls for special election. And then Resolution 1438, it deals with the issue of bonding capacity, which also gets put to the voters in the special election. So while I may be the one up here tonight, I just wanted to recognize the staff and other consultants who have been working on this, this Infrastructure Financing Plan. So Katie Jacobson, Erin Laurel, John and Konstantin from Chronic, and then, most importantly, Economic Planning Systems. And we have Jamie Gomez here tonight to help answer any questions you have about the plan. So the Infrastructure Financing Plan is really a key document that's going to guide the management of the IFD for the next 30 years. And of course, if possible, if the law changes, and we could extend that period 45 years. In developing the plan, we've, we've pretty much looked at the existing Bridge District specific plan, and the financing plan, and all the documents that you've approved in the past, is, is the basis for, for putting together the budget, the costs, and assumptions about land development, and absorption of land uses over time. So let me just talk about the plan for a minute, and just, you've got, you know, the staff report in front of you, and you've got the, the, the plan, but I'll call out some of the high points. One of the, the major analyses that we look at is anticipated tax increment generation over 30 years and 45 years. And so this is, this is where you're looking at, you know, over 9 million square feet of both residential and non-residential development over a long period of time. And what, what is that going to create in terms of assessed valuation? So we were looking at $386 million in tax increment that could be generated, based on the absorption model that we put together. Again, the revenue stream is illustrative. It's really going to depend on the pace of development, and the type of development, the mixture of development that occurs over time. We made very conservative, conservative assumptions about the land use values initially. So in other words, we, we looked at what type of values would be created from commercial development, residential development, and we tried to keep those, those estimates conservative upfront. Another aspect of the plan is looking at the bonding capacity, and that's the real reason we're doing this plan. We want to be able to take something that is a general fund revenue, turn it into a district revenue, and be able to, to, to bond against it, so that we can, we can finance infrastructure. And so the bonding capacity ranges between 234 million to 45 million. And it's going to assume that, it's very much like with redevelopment, where you had to have a coverage of, let's say, 125% before you issued bonds, so 125% of what your, your annual debt service is. And, and so over time, bonds will be issued, you know, periodically, when you generate enough coverage, and, and it makes sense, given your project needs, to issue bonds. And then there's a set of public facilities, and this is taken right out of the finance plan for, for the Bridge District, from the specific plan. And so we looked at the backbone improvements, things like streetcar infrastructure, supplemental infrastructure, such as enhanced riverwalk or plaza improvements, as well as the ability to use some of the funds on, on pre-development. And so the IFD bond funds, or pay-as-you-go expenses, will pretty much replace what was identified as the role for, for redevelopment bonds, and redevelopment tax increment in, in the finance plan. Finally, there is a fiscal impact analysis in the report. And, and, and this section of the report, you look at the impact to the city's general fund as you build out the Bridge District. And you're going to have city expenses for police, fire, things like that, over time. And then you're going to have a revenue stream that, that spins off the development, but you're going to be taking out a large portion of the property tax, and instead using that for capital improvements. So what's that impact? And so what we found is that as long as we can get CFDR in place to help finance the O and M over the future time period, there will be a positive impact, fiscal impact of, of the IFD on, on the general fund. And, you know, tonight's action in approving the IFD plan isn't the final step in formation, of course. It's going to require a vote of qualified electors, and so should you approve tonight's resolutions, we would move, move on to sending out ballots to the approximately 20 property owners in September. And then October 8th is election day, or when those ballots need to be returned to the clerk. And we anticipate coming back to you October 15th, to have the clerk announce the results of the election, and hopefully asking you to, to adopt an ordinance establishing the district. So that's pretty much staff presentation, and I, or the consultant, are here to answer your questions.
Questions at the staff?
Paul.
Mr. Kristoff?
What are going to be the fundamental ways to generate enough money so that we can support a bond? Will it take the development community putting sticks in the ground first? Or how will that work?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a situation where you really need to see develop, private development occur in a substantial way. And so I think we were looking at maybe five years, you know, given the absorption schedule in the plan, which again, we don't, we don't know that that's going to be what it is. But it would take about five years before you'd be looking at bonding. That's not to say that there isn't the ability to do pay-as-you-go expenditures. There may be pre-development expenditures that are, that are needed, and you obviously are going to be talking about the CIP later, later this evening. So that, pay-as-you-go is another option. But it's going to be a while before we can bond.
Mr. LaDesmond?
Paul, thanks so much for the, for the update and the overview of the resolutions we have in front of us. And before I ask the question, it's just, it's really great work by the team to get us to this point, and get this ready, basically, to implement. So we've come a long way since three years ago with the end of redevelopment, so this is terrific. And I'm kind of piggybacking on Mr. Kristoff's question on, not just your assumptions to, basically, for the projections of the bond, which, which you anticipate net 386 million, thereabouts, correct, of bondable?
Well, that's, that will be the tax increment stream.
Okay.
The bonding amount will be, will be less than that.
Okay.
It will be about 230 some odd million.
Okay. And, and to fulfill that, you leveraged the Bridge, the Bridge District Financing Plan, which included in there assumptions on densities and, and the type of commercial use. So it's just that, for us, to get to that bonding point, we also have to make sure the type of project we're working on is consistent with the plan. And shouldn't, and I know we've had this discussion recently regarding the incentives, that we want to promote high-density housing, and for, for, for housing, affordable housing issues. So I just want to make sure we're all clear that that's sort of, the only way this works, to get to that 200 and something million dollars of bondable, that will pay for the backbone infrastructure we need, we just have to keep along the plan. Is that a correct statement?
That is correct statement.
Okay. It's all in front of us. Thank you. This is great, that we're able to be at this point. Thanks much.
Mr. Protime Johannesen?
Thank you. Yeah, the, I guess my question's concerned with CFDR. As you've mentioned, we have a projected general fund, or general deficit in the district, starting in 2028, which, you know, is general fund money that we're going to have to come up with somehow. So is a vote the same for a CFDR and the IFD, same threshold?
It's the same threshold, correct.
And is there any indication why this wouldn't pass now? See, I mean, you're going to be coming, it looks like in October, some mitigating measures if it doesn't pass. Are there options at that point, or not to proceed with the IFD?
Well, very good point. Now, one of the things that, that staff has been grappling with is, you know, what, what happens if the IFD passes, and let's say CFDR doesn't? And so you ask whether there's a reason someone would vote for one and not the other, and I say, yes, because one is, either has a neutral or positive effect, and the other is a special tax levy. Now, we've, we've got a long policy directive to form this district from, from the council. And private property owner participation in, in maintenance is really a key feature of the overall financing plan. So if, if as an alternative, you held back money from the IFD to pay for, for maintenance, if property owners didn't approve the district, you would take money away from your ability to bond and to build capital improvements. Now, another option that we are looking at is if, if CFDR doesn't pass, and we don't want to get ahead of ourselves, right? We would come back to you with what the alternatives are. But, for example, what we, we currently do in the Washington neighborhood, where we haven't gotten CFDK in place, is we still have an assessment of property owners pursuant to the development agreements, that provides revenue for, for maintenance, because it's a condition of their development. So we still assess them as if the CFD were in place, and we can certainly do that here, but it's not, not optimal.
Right, right. Okay, all right. So the, a couple of technical issues. So the, the TOT is part of the, and general fund analysis, that what the table's in the thing for, in our report for?
Yes, yes. TOT is seen as part of the revenue stream that will help support city services in the future in the district.
But, okay, but TOT within the Bridge District, every, every time I've seen you talk about a project that involved TOT, you were proposing not to have us get it. So is that, is that really a reasonable analytical assumption, that the TOT would cover, and would offset in any way the general fund?
Yeah, I, I think that, that if we were to use TOT for an alternative, such as helping subsidize a hotel.
Just theoretically, yeah.
Theoretically, theoretically. We, we would have to, in order to address, and this is why we're looking at, is kind of a mitigating factor for any shortfalls in what the, let's say CFDR provides, or what is generated by things like TOT and sales tax, is the council really has the ability, on an annual basis, to decide how much of the IFD revenues to hold back for maintenance.
Yeah, no, I, I get that. I just, the, I, for me, I would like our, our reports and analysis to be at least transparent. I'm not saying that it's not honest, it is. But I mean, we, the TOT does exist, it does, it does flow to the general fund. But I do think, you know, there should be a footnote or some notation on the, the actual overall general fund analysis, that, that, you know, a hotel project, a project that's likely to generate TOT in this district, you know, is, there's at least a possibility that that won't flow to the general fund, because that has been, that has been a feature of every single hotel project in this district that's been contemplated forever. So we should be honest with ourselves and with the, the public, in this case, just as a matter of precedent. The, so the boundary, I think, I understand why the boundaries are the way that they are, but let me just, let me ask you. So if we, if we do, the, the boundaries don't cover the west side of Riverfront, once you, once you go south of the freeway. They cover the east side, because there's a, you know, a property there that's slated for development. But if you use the IFD money to make improvements, for example, to that street, in front of that, in front of, you know, well, it's, it's in front of one, but it's actually in front of both of them, the other property is still a beneficiary of all of the underlying improvements that occur. So, I mean, other than trying to draw the, the right boundaries for the voting, is, is there another reason why we, why we wouldn't, you know, try to, sort of, what's the natural infrastructure catchment area? You know, it, within, you know, within reason, in a fuzzy way? What's the natural infrastructure catchment area, and draw the district boundaries to match that?
Well, with, with IFDs, there's, there's no requirement that you expend the funds within the boundary of the IFD. So while we, we drew the boundary in a, in a way that it seemed natural at the time, whether it was for voting, or because we had done it that way before, and we thought, you know, we had the votes. The fact is, is that the council will have the discretion to spend IFD revenues outside of the district. So if it benefits a property, if a roadway improvement benefits an area outside the boundaries, that that's not an issue.
No, I know we can spend the money, but the, but it, but we won't get, we, the tax increment is generated because of that. So we, we make improvements to Riverfront, which we, are becoming increasingly likely because of the new bridge. We make improvements to Riverfront that front on this portion of the IFD that's on the river. That will have pretty direct implications for the value of the property that's on the same street, that's going to benefit from the same streetscape, and bike lanes, and streetcar infrastructure, and everything else. So why wouldn't we just have that in the IFD? I mean, unless...
Well, my response is, you know, we, we kind of drew the boundaries for what we considered a pilot. As we come back with the- As we come back with IFD number two, and we've already kind of got, got the contract in place and we're ready to go, we can, we can really take in, you know, all the other properties that are adjacent to the Bridge District, Washington neighborhood. We can, we can really make that, that next IFD include every other, you know, kind of susceptible development site within the city that, that can generate value.
Well, if, if we think that they will vote for it, right, I mean, it's, it's, I mean, it's, it's a two-part test, right? So, I mean, if, if we came back and said, oh, we just want to add that one parcel now, you know, that one part, side of the street back in, well, then we have to get the votes of just that one property owner, the two of them.
We'll be facing the same issue when we draw the boundaries of the next district. We'll be trying to pull in enough properties where we know we have support to get.
Right, but why not, I guess what I was saying, why not just do it right now? I mean, why not, why not draw that property in since it is the beneficiary of the infrastructure improvements that we're making?
Well, when we did the resolution of intent on April 16th, we established the boundary. And to change it now, I believe we would, the attorneys are here, I believe we would have to go back and redo the resolution of intent. And the, the problem with redoing the boundaries now is that we're, we're trying to get this project to a group of property owners before really it becomes a vote of, 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 of the residents of the district where, where we'd be really, really uncertain about the outcome.
Okay. Can I ask a question of you? I just wanted to clarify which, which property, I'm sorry, you referred to. That's what I thought.
Yeah, the Caltrans property and whatever else is across the street on the Riverfront, on the south side of the freeway from Riverfront.
Right, okay.
Including the, you know, potential streetcar yard and whatever.
Yeah, no, I, I understand. So, and I think what I'm hearing from Paul is that we just have not reached into residential neighborhoods with this first ID, which was why we kept the boundaries where.
That, that's correct.
So, right, which residential?
I think, I think what he's considering is, Paul, I might be wrong here, I think what he's considering is IFD number two would be the Washington neighborhood and surrounding neighborhoods east, north of the Bridge District and maybe some surrounding areas that would still fill the improvements that we're making in IFD number one.
That's the point I was trying to make, is with the next one, we, we can, you know, still.
But this is not Washington.
I, I understand. So I think there's a miscommunication between you two. So that's what I'm trying to bridge that gap.
I apologize.
Yeah, I'm talking about the south side of the Bridge District, directly, essentially directly under the freeway and immediately to the south of that. But on the, but on the east side, of the west side of Riverfront Drive.
Correct. And, and, you know, again, we, we can, we can try to pull in those parcels in the next IFD that we would start and hopefully complete by the end of the year.
But how? I mean, I, I really want to understand how because I, I don't see the path for that. I don't see the set of property owners that together would be voting on such a thing that would, that would actually accomplish that. I mean, I, I, I mean, can you make that part of the IFD along with Washington even though they're not contiguous?
That's correct. It can be, it could be whatever assemblage of non-contiguous properties in the city we choose to put together. And there would be some combination, I think, of, of, let's say, if, if we wanted to keep it just property owners and not have it go to the electorate, we would look at properties where, that were non-residential in nature and didn't have folks who were voters. But if we start pulling in residential and it goes to a vote of, of, let's say, tenants of properties and things like that, that would really change the dynamics. So your point's well taken.
Maybe, for me, that is not a value. I, I'm not, I am absolutely not trying to structure something that avoids a vote of actual people. I don't believe particularly in this IFD that folks who move into the, the Bridge District are, since there's no cost to them whatsoever of being in the IFD, and it will, and this is the basis for which all of their infrastructure and amenities and water will be fixed, right? There's no incentive not to vote for it. So I don't, I, I, just as a, as a matter, as a mechanical matter, I don't think the, you know, that we should be making a lot of efforts. We don't, we don't need to. And I, it just, it, I, it makes me want to take a shower to keep talking about avoiding having residents vote on it. To me, that's not an objective in, in, in either regard. So I, I, I get it. I understand why. We've gone through this with, you know, P bids and everything else before. I, I understand the reasoning, but I don't think it's necessary in this case to really obsess about that. I, I understand the timing as well. I just want to make, I want to get it right. So I, I just do not want to, I don't want to get put off on this issue and then it never moves. So if you're saying we're, you, you are very confident we're going to be able to do this soon, then I'm okay with it. But if, but I just don't, and I want to get parked on this and then hope that I forget about it. Because to me, that, this is, it's, it's not, it does not make sense for us to be drawing a district that does not actually match up with the infrastructure area that we're trying to, we're trying to solve. And if, and I wouldn't want to bundle this with a south, you know, with a Pioneer Bluffs IFD that, given the complexities of doing anything in Pioneer Bluffs, could take years and years and years to try to negotiate. And that's what, that's, that's, I worry about getting attached to that. If we can do it in Washington and you're confident we can deliver on this next year, I'm okay with it. But I would, I want to know that that's the case.
Understood.
So is it?
We will most certainly move forward with, with a district that addresses your concerns.
And Paul, can I ask one question? It, it is correct that the boundaries of the, the proposed boundaries of the IFD line up with CFDR, right?
That, that, that is correct, except, except to the extent that there are three parcels that are adjacent to Really Field Ballpark that were added into the IFD boundaries that aren't in CFDR. Because there are three parcels that add development potential.
Okay, yeah. All right, other questions at this, at this point, pre-public hearing? All right, so before we open the public hearing then, we're being asked to approve Resolution 14-36. It's been moved by Mayor Protime, Johannesen.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Ledesma. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. The resolution is adopted. So now we're going to proceed to item 1437 and 1438 and open a public hearing. And we don't have any requests to speak on this one, but it is a public hearing, so does anyone wish to address the council on, on these items, these resolutions? Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing and return it back to the council.
Remove the item.
Okay, been moved by Mr. Kristof and seconded by Ms. Sandin. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. All right, I, thank you. Item 12 is a public hearing to consider Resolution 14-23 adopting a resolution of formation, establishing community facilities district, our Bridge District, and calling an election to submit to qualified electors the proposals of levying a special tax and establishing appropriations limit for the district.
Well, we, we talked about CFDR in the previous item. And so it's also, since it's on a parallel track and the procedures for, for adoption or, or formation are similar, that's another milestone tonight in terms of formation in CFDR. So it's a 157-acre maintenance district. It is going to be similar to 14 other maintenance districts that we have in the city. And so tonight, your, your major action is going to be adopting the resolution of formation, as they call it, Resolution 1423. And, and the major part of a, a formation is approving the hearing report. And the hearing report, which was attached and in your, in your packet, is really the document that, that, that governs the, the CFD. And so, you know, it, it includes things like the assessment rates that are applied to different land uses, the maximum tax levy or max tax, as we call it, that can be applied to, to properties within the district. And it includes various guidelines for ongoing management of the district once it's formed. And the, let's talk about some of the, the, the major, you know, kind of pieces of the hearing report. The, the assessment rate's the big one. And we look at both residential and non-residential land uses. We look at what we call the, the person generation, the people generation that each one of those land uses has. And that becomes a major factor, the nexus in how we assign costs. And that's the, the, the benefit nexus in, in the, in the formula. And so it's going to vary by land use. You can, you can see in, in your report, there are various tables that address it. The hearing report also talks about the maintenance budget, and it includes a description of the maintenance items. Again, these are items that come out of the specific plans. Some of them are billed as part of the, the 2014 plan, like Riverwalk, and others are to be, to be built in the future, like the plaza, parks, and landscaped strips along the streets. And of course, street lighting entries, the typical item that you find in, in CFDs. And so the budget in there, again, is looking at, you know, the maintenance costs when you've got to build out of the district and everything's built. So, you know, right now, not a lot is built and the budget is under 100,000. But as, as we get out there towards buildout and all that stuff needs ma, maintenance, capital replacement and things like that, the, the budget gets much greater. The max tax is what we, we call the maximum special tax that you can apply to, to each parcel. And so we have a, a table in the report that, that addresses this. And so when you look at something like a, a residential rate, so what's, what's it going to cost for your typical resident in terms of an annual tax? Well, the range for 1415 would be between 88, $83 a year and $106 per year for that residential unit, depending on the size. And that is the lowest of any of our CFDs within the city. And the reason it could be kept low is because you have a mixture of uses. And so you have all these commercial uses that are anticipated to be built in the district that also contribute. And, and that's why you have that, that, that balance. And then, you know, finally, you know, within the report, there are some, some key guidelines, mostly as it relates to, over time, we have to continually update our database to, to address properties as they develop. Yeah, because it's really, the, the way the, the district will work is we'll first assign the special tax to developed properties. And if that's sufficient to cover the budget, it ends there. But if it's, if it's insufficient, if we don't have enough development, for instance, then there would be special tax applied to undeveloped land. So while tonight's actions are, are a key milestone with, with adoption of the hearing report, as we discussed, there is a, an election that's required. And with many of the other CFDs, almost all of them in fact, that the city council has formed, there's been a, a waiver of the election requirement because usually you had one property owner who was, was putting in a subdivision. I think the exception where we did have an election for CFD formation like this was Lighthouse Marina, CFDM, as we call it. And so we, we do believe that, you know, the formation will have strong support from, from the property owners. And we're hopeful that reaching the 66 and two-third majority vote will, will be a reasonable outcome. Ballots, again, will be sent out in September. Election Day will be October 8th, and we should be back to you October 15 with the results.
Rep. Tim Johannesen.
Yeah, Paul, just on the, the depreciation costs, the 222 million annual amount, is that to amortize the $332 million of improvements?
Correct. That's, that's, that's an amortization of a certain, yeah, I believe it's exact, exactly that amount. It's what was in, in the, the specific plan, correct.
And what, over what life is that?
It's over, I believe, 30 years? It depended on the infrastructure piece. It varies. It varies by the, the expected life of, let's say, a street light versus a street paving or landscaping has a much shorter life.
But it's in today's dollars, over?
Into, in, yes.
Okay, which will change over time. So that number will, should be adjusted by whatever the true replacement cost is at some point?
Yeah, and we'll be able to do a, you know, an increase adjustment to, to those costs as, as we can do an, an increase to the max tax to account for those types of cost increases. So we can increase the max tax by 4% per annum to account for the expected increase in the costs of replacement and things like that.
Yeah, all right, thanks.
Kristof.
Yeah, Paul, so it's going to be very important that if X number of, I want to phrase this, if a certain amount of commercial is what really justifies this, we can't vary from that then. Is that correct?
The plan is set up so we can't have a variation in land uses.
Okay.
I think ultimately what we'll be looking at is we're going to have to adjust the maintenance budget to account for how much special tax we're taking in. If, if the special tax, let's say you get a residential neighborhood there and you don't get much commercial, and yet we still have the same maintenance costs, one of the options we've left the council to avoid impacts on the general fund, again, is the ability to hold back some of the IFD revenues to, to assist with that maintenance shortfall. Or, you know, maintenance budgets need to be adjusted downward based on the amount of special tax you bring in from, let's say, a predominantly residential neighborhood.
I guess my concern is, 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 it seems like it's within any kind of development, whether it's here or whether it's a south port or wherever it is. It seems like the easy stuff is the housing. That usually, I mean, that gets done, but it's the commercial or it's some of the other kinds of zoning that really lags. It's tough. I mean, it's really hard to put that business district together that is commercial in nature. And so I, I guess that's the only concern that I have. I mean, I think you're headed down the right direction. I support the, I support the item, but at the same time, I just would like to get my comfort level raised a little bit so that I, I realize that there's going to be enough commercial in this to make it all work.
Yeah. I, I think both, the, the points that both Mr. Kristof and Mr. Ledesma have made about, I mean, we are, I mean, we, the, our land use plans have to, I mean, we are, we're, we're building a lot of stuff based on those plans that depend on them, and they won't succeed without them. I mean, this is, I mean, we've been doing this, I mean, the, once we adopted the financing strategy, that's what was necessary. But yeah, I mean, we will have flexibility, but they will all have financial implications in addition to the community implications.
But I don't want to borrow from the IFDs.
Yep.
You know, I mean, that's for infrastructure. That's for, that's a special fund.
And it's going to have to be clear to, you know, applicants and to landowners that in addition to our, you know, our general plan and specific land objectives, we've, we've all, we've, you know, this decision was made in 2014 when they approved the IFD and the CFD and the rest of the financing plans a couple of years ago, that, you know, if you want to, if you want to build a one-story residential only project, it's not going to fly. And, and it can't fly because we've layered so many of the finances in order to make this project work with an assumption of a certain level of density and a certain mix of commercial. And it has to be, I mean, it's, it, it can't be, I mean, it has to be, we have to have fidelity to it, so. Right?
So not a BOE headquarter.
Oh, yeah. Ms. Sandin?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think one of the most serious things that we ta, take up as a council is contemplating new taxes. And so I, I think this is a, a really serious item. I, however, live in one of the districts that is serviced by, by a, a CFD. And I, I think that our city does a really good job when it, when it's built out in a fashion that, that can serve, serve a district, that, that we do, we, we do a really good job in, in servicing. So to, to the points of having to, to hold developers and, and future residents accountable, I, I think I am supportive of this moving forward.
Paul, can I ask you about the, two things? One is, is a streetcar line two an eligible expenditure under either or both the CFDR or the IFD?
We, definitely the IFD. It's, it's an eligible expense. I'd have to check.
As long as it's eligible in one, and that was the one, the CFD was the one that made the most sense. So, yeah, not the contribution to the streetcar line that we already have under plan. So, yeah, not the contribution to the streetcar line that we already have under planning, but if we were to, if we were to, you know, build, start the second line, that that would be, at least, whether we have enough money or not is a different question in the IFD, but, but that it would be at least eligible under, under that framework. And then, the second question is on this developed undeveloped policy. Is that, is that required for CFDs or is that an innovation that we created? It sort of, it runs counter to what a lot of cities are doing, which is trying to create incentives for land not to sit idle and, and for property owners in districts just like this not to try to play the last mover, you know, so wait for somebody to go in and do all the hard stuff and go when the market's not proven yet and then hold back, right? So, that, so there are already plenty of incentives not to develop. And so, a lot of cities are trying to adjust their fee and tax mechanisms to make, to create a cost of leaving your land undeveloped when development is supposed to be encouraged. And this seems to run the opposite to that. So, is it, is it a requirement of CFDs or did we create this kind of a policy?
It is, it is not a requirement. It's been a practice. One of the, the work task items on the finance division's schedule this year is to come back to you with a debt policy. And the debt policy is really where we could, we could, we could certainly make modifications. You can certainly make them now. But we, one thing that we are missing is a very explicit kind of policy on how we deal with debt. And that would include CFDs and, and our approach to first applying special tax to developed and then going to, to apply it to undeveloped. It's not a hard and fast rule. It's a practice that we've, we've undertaken and it's, it's something that we can certainly revisit.
Yeah, I guess, so in a, in a normal taxation environment, so if it's like, you know, grandma owns a parcel and she's been in the family for a long time and is sitting there and they don't know what to do with it or whatever, it makes, it makes a lot of sense to say, okay, you know, let's not burden it with a lot of, of costs that are, that it's not help contributing to generate. I mean, it's not, it's not contributing to the generation of trips and other, and other stuff like that. But in a district like this where it, that's not the case at all, it's all large landowners, a uniform assessment strategy to me has a lot to recommend it. Now, I understand why the landowners wouldn't like, would, I mean, the folks who are voting for it would prefer a system because this means they don't pay at all, right? The only people who pay are the folks that move in, residents and, and commercial, commercial owners. But there's, I don't see the public policy reason why we would have this undeveloped, developed distinction. And I do, and I can see why it would, why, why it can create the wrong incentives because what we want is for people to proceed now that, now that we are putting all of this, now that we're putting ourselves on the line and we're making investments and we're signing contracts with the state, we're doing all this stuff, we need everybody to be on, you know, to do their, to be, doing their part. A CFD is not going to be enough to make somebody develop, but it certainly gets entered into the calculations about how much does it cost me to sit and do nothing versus how much does it cost me to actually do the development that I committed to do. So, I, to me, that, that's not a policy I think makes sense in a CFD for us to be having in a purely large property owner, master planned, self-contained district that doesn't involve, you know, mom and pop, regular residential property ownership. And I do feel like it creates the wrong, we have plenty of areas, I wish we could do this with, with the commercial rentals, but, you know, commercial storefronts and stuff where folks love, love to leave their properties vacant. Maybe I'm being unfair, maybe they don't love, they seem insufficiently incentivized to rent, to lease to anyone who wants to have a restaurant or anything else in the community. That's, that's a bigger issue, but it's, it's a facet of this same phenomenon where, where we, where we don't create the proper, we create disincentives in some respects to, to develop when we should be creating incentives to move on projects, so. But you're saying we can't, we can't change that on this one?
We would, we would have to come back to you in, in the future with major changes to the rate and method of apportionment if we want to do that.
And would that, would that, could we apply that to this CFD in the future or is this a?
Well, once we get this in place and we have the rate and method of apportionment in place, we can't really go back and change it unless we go back and, and, you know, do a, do a complete redo of the district. I can say this, the, the approach to developed and undeveloped kind of mirrors the policy that we took with CFD 27. So, it, it, it may not be a hard and fast rule, but for guidance, we did look at CFD 27 where undeveloped land has some type of de minimis assessment. And then, developed land has a much, much higher rate. And we kind of took the same approach so that CFDR would kind of mirror the, the philosophy behind how we apply the special tax under CFD 27.
No, I understand. I just think it's exactly the wrong public policy. So, I, although I don't know what CFD 27 is, I'm going to admit that right now. I have not memorized all the CFD numbers. But I just think it's the, to me, that's the, that's the wrong policy in the first place. And we should, I'm not saying we, I don't necessarily, we should just change it right now, but we should, it's a policy debate that we should be having, but like the one, but we just got this as a sort of a take it or leave it policy. That's where, I want to have that debate and this seems like the district where it's the most appropriate for it to occur because all, all the properties are generating the demand for this infrastructure right now, right? It's not, it's not, the, the fact that you're not developing your property is not, is not minimizing it our, at all, the imperative that we have to do the infrastructure. So, it, there's no, there's no, there's no policy rationale for deferring the cost on, on the CFD into the future.
And, and again, I, I don't have a defense for it, but I can say that, you know, my boss has on my work plan to come back to you with a debt policy, which is sorely lacking from this discussion by the end of the year. So, we will be coming back to you with, with a, a policy where we can certainly look at these types of issues and changing them for future CFDs.
So, why can't we do this on this one?
We, we can. The council could, could not approve tonight's action and we would, we would go back and we would considerate, reconsider the, the allocation methodology of, of how we apply special tax and we would, we would change the formula for vacant land and, and then bring this back to you in a future talk.
And what would be the time implications of, if we were to go down that road, what would be the, I mean, with the other one, you were, we'd have to renotice, do a whole new intention and all that. I get that, I understood that, but with this one, what are the time implications?
While he's thinking, can I bring up?
Sure.
Thank you.
I will confer with our consultant.
Thank you. And while you're, because I don't, you're, you're bringing up some really good points. I'm not, I don't want to diminish that at all. If we're going to have that debate, I want, I want it thoroughly, I want, I want a thorough debate on that and, and to understand the implication of changing taxation assessment strategies to further public policy. In other words, it feels a little bit like the tail wagging the dog because we're trying to get this deal done and we're, but you're bringing up a really good point. So, I'm trying to figure out, and once, maybe they, when they come back with the timing of this.
Right, this, this is not Rivermont. This is not some small CFD. This is, I mean, this is the most, the largest, most significant one we have ever done. And, and, and so, I mean, and it's one where the policy matters the most because of the massive amount of public dollars that are going into infrastructure.
And I, and I, and it deserves, that debate deserves the most thorough amount of, of discussion and discourse and, and study on our part. And I'm just trying to reconcile from city staff and, okay, where has this put us now? It's going to take, because not only the time to get the deal done, staff is going to put, I would want to see, what does that mean by way of, where has this been worked before? Has it worked before? What have been the implications at the city by implementing such a policy? So, again, that, that will take staff time to research and do whatever. So, again, I'm just, that, I get your point. It's just, I'm not, I don't want to come back frankly with a half-hearted attempt just to kind of satisfy this debate. It's a, it's a, it's a good debate. I just want to make sure we have a good timing to have it.
If, if it would be helpful, well, number one, you asked for a timeframe if we were to go back and redo it. So, we'd be looking at six months to come back to you with the resolution to formation because we'd have to go through all the initial steps again. If I could, Jamie Gomez from EPS is here, who can talk a little bit about, since they have helped guide the city for the last few decades on how we structure our CFDs, I always, I would hope Jamie could kind of talk a little bit about the, the philosophy behind how we approached undeveloped land tax.
Are you, okay, or you want to? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jamie Gomes, Economic and Planning Systems. So, one of the questions regarding the undeveloped land tax is that the, the tax, in, in any given year, the intent of the tax, the special tax on a property is to cover the cost of maintaining the infrastructure in the Bridge District. So, it's a, it's a tax for maintenance, not for building the infrastructure. So, I wanted to clarify that. And then, secondly, the, the undeveloped land tax actually at works as a backup mechanism so that in the event that the tax from developed property is insufficient to fund your annual costs, then you have the ability to leverage an undeveloped land tax. So, it's not really there to create a disincentive to let land sit idle, but rather it gives the city flexibility that in the event that the developed property for which the areas are being maintained doesn't give you adequate revenue, you have the ability to go to undeveloped land in any given year to make up any potential shortfalls. So, I thought that might be helpful.
Just, the cost of maintaining this infrastructure, and you can see it in the fact that there's a 25% allocation for vandalism, the cost of it is, is actually not reduced by not developing. We've built the Riverwalk, we've built the sidewalks, we've built the roads. It's there. It needs to be maintained. And so, the, the, the fact that somebody is not developing is actually in some respects is increasing the likelihood of vandalism, this is what you're saying, you know, by not having eyes on the street. It's not helpful. So, I, I get what you're saying. It's just the policy rationale in this case because we have made 40 million dollars of infrastructure improvements already, which require maintenance and servicing. As the, the traditional argument doesn't hold in this case because we're not building out the infrastructure over time in this, in the same way, I mean, we are, but not in the same, we, the initial investment has been so large that the fact that folks aren't, aren't developing is reducing our ability to maintain it. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Joe Hannison.
Yeah, I guess just to add a bit in this conversation, when we start, if we're basically front loading a lot of, lot of fees on, on undeveloped land, what is the implication to the vote in getting the district approved? If it's too burdensome, I don't know, there's probably a balance there where it becomes, you know, you're not going to get any votes for it. I'm not sure what.
We've, we've been meeting on a regular basis with the Bridge District property owners as we develop this methodology. And it was interesting when we first presented them with the, the special tax allocation and the undeveloped land tax was there, they all get out their iPhones and they were calculating what it, what it would be. So, I really can't speak for the property owners, but I, I believe that it would make it much more difficult if we increased the undeveloped land tax just because you have, you have land that has carrying costs that doesn't have economic revenue for those property owners. Fully understanding your point, Mayor, but answering the question, I do believe that it would make it more difficult to get, get these approved in the election process.
All right. So, you've successfully created a box? Not for me, but I, I, yes. I'm, there's two items in a row, but is, okay, is there any other questions on this item? Is there a motion? Any other discussion?
Excuse me, pardon me, Mayor. This is a public hearing item.
All right, thanks. All right, so we're going for the public hearing on item 13. The motion's still pending. Anyone wish to request the council on, on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Return to the council, any other questions following the motion?
Maybe just to follow up on that, I would like to see what we can do to move in the mayor's direction on, on, you know, what kind of incentives or disincentives are in this, this current plan to the extent we can.
Yep.
All right. Mr. Kristoff.
Paul, what's the potential downside? The potential downside, I mean, if you, if, heaven forbid, and I don't think it's going to happen, but if we had another recession, we certainly would not have any development. We've got a lot of infrastructure that's in place there that needs attention throughout the time. So, so what's the downside?
I see no downside in forming the district to get it in place as a financing mechanism for, for maintenance over a long period. In fact, in perpetuity, it, it provides you that tool should you need it. If development does not occur or we severely ratchet back the infrastructure investment, if we left it as it were today, then your, the amount that you would assess would be only a, a small portion or percentage of the max tax. You would still have the ability to assess property owners to, to provide maintenance, which now is 100% funded by the city. So, I don't see any downside in forming the district. The assumptions that we're working under, again, so much depends on the type of high density urban development that we've envisioned there. And the finance plan is driven by it. Transportation is driven by it. But in terms of the financing district, I can't identify a downside of putting this in place at this time.
I guess one of the, one of my fears, and that is, we want to move along with street car and some of those Gucci kinds of development. And if we don't get the housing portion of this so that we can put some bodies on chairs, then my concern is, is that we will be taking money from the IFD and putting it into something else like streetcar. And that is of concern for me, especially long-term. Because we have to make sure that if we are moving forward with streetcar, we have to be moving forward with other kinds of things also. I mean, we think that streetcar is going to be a catalyst for that, but we don't know. And that is a fear that I have. So, anyway, just let you know.
All right, so, thank you. We have the motion on the floor. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, I'm opposed, so it carries four to one. All right, item 13 is public hearing to consider adoption of resolution 14-30 confirming the diagram and assessment and ordering improvements for the storm drain maintenance district number one.
Every year is we, we get ready to put assessments on the tax roll related to our special financing districts, our landscape and lighting districts, storm drain districts, and our community facility districts, we have annual proceedings where we have to come back and get city council authorization to put the levy on the, the tax roll, which in this case would be for the 2014, 2015 tax year. That tax roll gets submitted to the county beginning of August this year, August 11th. So, with this item, we have our landscaping and lighting assessment districts. And this, as well as the following item, it requires, excuse me, we're, we're on storm drain. Storm drain requires a, a public hearing prior to your adoption of the assessment diagram and the assessment report that's attached to your, your staff report. So, I, I won't go into much detail on this one. The, the railies landing area, really the Washington neighborhood is served by this storm drain maintenance district. And it's an assessment that we have been putting on the, on the tax rolls every year.
Questions before the public hearing? All right, then let's open the public hearing on item 13. Do you wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and return to the council. Any further questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we approve the report for fiscal year 2014, 15 with budget and fee schedule and adopt resolution 1430 confirming the diagram and the assessment.
I'll second that.
Right, it's been moved by Mr. Kristoff and seconded by Ms. Sandine. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, hearing none. That motion carries on 14 is public hearing to consider adoption of resolution 14-31 confirming the diagram and assessment and ordering improvements to be made for the landscaping and lighting district number one.
Similar to the last item, the adoption of 1431 requires that first a public hearing is held, after which the item can be approved.
All right, any questions before we open the public hearing? All right, you know, public hearings open on item 14. Anyone wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing, return to the council.
Mayor, I'd move the report.
It's been moved by Mr. Kristoff and seconded by Mayor Joe Hannison. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none?
And adopt the resolution.
Yeah, and hearing, no opposition, that motion carries. Item 15 is a public hearing to consider resolutions 14-27 and 14-28 authorizing some- Item 15 is a public hearing to consider resolutions 14-27 and 14-28 authorizing submission of state community development block grant program income waivers for the Delta Lane Affordable Housing Project and the Homeless Outreach and Coordination Project.
Good evening. We're here this evening to ask that the council conduct a public hearing to consider moving some of our CDBG, well, all of our CDBG program income into two projects. We currently have a balance, a much larger balance of program income than usual due to some unusually large loan payoffs this year, a balance of $1,251,428 in revenues that have been received from previously awarded CDBG grants. In order to move these funds, a public hearing is required by CDBG guidelines. We were hoping to be able to come before the council and let you know that we would be getting closer to entitlement, but unfortunately, as you saw by the memo last week, the latest census information this year came out and showed us short by 109 residents. So we will be under the state program for the foreseeable future. And the state has recently been told by HUD that it is not handling program income correctly. They've been instructed to make changes as of July 1st, but they have not decided exactly how those changes are going to work. And that is why our program income is at risk. We don't have a way to hold on to it like we used to in a regular revolving loan fund. They're going to change all the rules, and we don't even know what those rules are going to be. However, they are giving the city the opportunity to submit program income waivers through the end of June. And so we're asking that the council consider program income waivers for two activities. We're limited to two. The first would be to program $60,000 to homeless outreach and coordination that would fund a program until hopefully we get new grant funds. We applied for funding in the 2014 round last month. And if awarded, we would have funding available probably in March of next year. The second is, oh, and I should mention that the council should have received a memo from the, or a letter from the county supporting that. We received that this afternoon, and they are offering office space for that position should the council decide to move forward with that resolution. The second one is for off-site infrastructure for the Delta Lane Affordable Housing Project. That would be $1,191,428. This would be for parking and sidewalk improvements, construction of a streetcar stop, and the cost of moving the sewer pump station that is in the very center of that site to an off-site location. That concludes my presentation. Does the council have any questions?
I'm not going to support the homeless coordinator, but that's another story.
So on the homeless one, so the mix of stuff, we've talked about the homeless coordinator quite a bit and the critical need to have, you know, real performance metrics that we're doing something. So can you describe a little bit of the relative mix of the work that's being done here? There's the making sure that chronically homeless individuals are linked with services, that's one of the objectives, one of the work programs here. The other is this completing a vulnerability index for homeless individuals receiving services. What are we, what are we hoping to accomplish? I mean, how will we know whether that's had an effect? Or is that, are we generating a data set for something else? Or what's, I hadn't heard of this particular piece before. What's the, what's the real world outcome we're hoping to achieve with that?
There are a number of jurisdictions who are starting to use a vulnerability index. And there's an organization called, shoot, I've forgotten the name of it now off the top of my head, Homebound, I believe. They kind of, they created it. Denver, Colorado is where it originated, I believe, or is one of the most significant users. They are also using it in LA now. There's a number of East Coast cities and states that are using it. What a vulnerability index does is it's a questionnaire that you fill out on a homeless person, rating their, basically their, how close to death they are is basically what it is. What is their physical state? What is their use of substance abuse? Where are they sleeping? Are they sleeping in safe locations? Are they getting medical care? Are they getting dental care? And then some of the indexes can be expanded to include things like what kind of income do they have? Are they eligible for income that they're not receiving? Social Security, veterans benefits, that sort of thing. And the idea of using a vulnerability index is it allows you to target your services to people who are in the most need. And in general, those are the people that are using the heaviest amount of public services already. The police department are being called because there's this major substance abuse or mental health issue that's causing them to act out. The fire department's being called because they have health issues and they're having to respond with an ambulance rather than taking someone to a clinic. So the idea is to target those folks through a vulnerability index. What we're hoping to find out here is just more data on the homeless folks in West Sacramento. How many are really truly at the high end of that scale? How many are the low end of that scale? And hope to inform, if we get the grant, do the big three-year program, inform how that program will be targeted. But we were asking the contractor whom we will be selecting to do an index on at least 30 people before they provide services, and then say six months in, because this is probably going to be about an eight-month contract, to see if they, if what they're doing is effective. If it's not effective, we don't want to keep doing that same thing.
Great, perfect. Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Johansson.
Okay, so just, so I understand. So basically, you're doing a homeless count, but then you're also, within that homeless population, creating a vulnerability index. So am I right that, so, okay, your vulnerability index is going to show how much that population is more at risk of dying, basically? So if you have, you're able to improve that, you still have the homeless count could be the same. So how do the two, you know, the person's health and being homeless, how do you bring that together?
Well, I'm not sure. Are you, the homeless count, are you referring to the count we do every other year?
Well, no, in terms of, I mean, you know, what are we trying to do? And we've talked about this whole homeless program, it's to reduce homelessness. So it's not going out and assess everybody who's homeless and not doing anything about those people. I mean, getting them in service is one thing, but also getting them in homes is another.
Right. And the goal is to get them into services and more sustainable housing situations. But it's difficult to, we have homeless data, the count that we do every other year, but that's done under the HUD guidelines that's not looking at anybody in the motels. And it's only looking at the people who can be identified as basically either sleeping outside or sleeping, we don't have shelter in West Sacramento, so we have a transitional, one transitional housing project. So it's people sleeping outside or sleeping in the transitional housing project on one particular night of the year. So what we're going to look for is, we're going to be surveying fewer people, but getting more in-depth information on those people to try and inform the way that we're providing services.
And that's just to create the baseline.
Yes.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, for me, the bottom line, it's easy in these, it's not easy. It's tempting to keep looking for more and more data when what we really need to do is like just start using some of the data we have that's imperfect to really do some, do stuff. So that's why, that was the reason for my question. I think it's the reason for the follow-up as well, is that, you know, I don't want to just end up where the result of the vulnerability index is we get, you know, the county and we get a report every year, here's where we are on vulnerability, and that hasn't done anything. And so it might create more information, but we're at a stage where we have enough information to take real action. So I was, and to evaluate the effect, what I liked about your, you know, your description of it was that it will give us a mechanism by which, you know, a metric by which we can evaluate the other interventions that we're doing. Are they really having an effect? Because we are both trying to reduce the number of homeless individuals, but we are trying to improve their, one, improve their lives, and reduce their impact on police and social services and on the neighborhoods as well. So it is true that even if the count stays the same, but the impact and the severity both for the individuals and for the community is improved, that's still a win, but we, but just getting a report would not be, I guess, is the point. All right, any other questions on this item or discussion? Were you going to move it, Mr. Kristoff? Is that what you said?
Yes, I will move adopt resolution 14-27.
This is a public hearing. Sorry, I keep doing this. I figure it's all public.
You've got to do a public hearing.
It's an all-public hearing night. All right, so we're going to open the public hearing on item 15. Anyone wish to address the counsel on this item? Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing. Mr. Kristoff, sorry.
I would move that we adopt resolution 14-27.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. And Mayor Pro Tem Johansson is moving.
I'll move to adopt resolution 14-27.
All right, and seconded by Ms. Andine. All those in favor of that, say aye. Aye. And those opposed?
Aye. I am opposed.
All right, so that motion carries four to one. All right, thank you. That brings us to item 16, which is presentation and discussion regarding the West Capitol Avenue Connections Study. You guys are killing me tonight.
I'm going to put this off.
Good evening. I have a very brief presentation regarding the West Capitol Connections Study for the City Council. We are seeking direction related to the long-term connection opportunities that have been studied in this analysis for inclusion in the HUD grant traffic analysis. And we're also soliciting direction related to two possible alternatives for resolving a circulation constraint that exists at West Capitol Avenue and Fifth Street and Tower Bridge Gateway and Fifth Street that were not studied with the West Capitol Connections Study. We'd like to refocus some grant money to study those alternatives. This area roughly represents the area that was studied with the West Capitol Connections Study. The existing constrained intersections are shown here. We analyzed the level of surface and under existing conditions, and also when the Grand Gateway Master Plan Area comes online, and the West Capitol Commons, now known as Capitol Yard Project, comes online. We also looked at what would happen when the overpass improvements triggered the shutdown of vehicular traffic on that section of West Capitol Avenue. The study analyzed three alternatives that would provide immediate relief if that trigger was to occur, and three long-term connection opportunities. This is alternative A. This provides the most opportunities for additional north-south and east-west bike ped connections. It also requires rail relocation. It is the only alternative that requires rail relocation. It reconnects the grid. The short-term immediate relief alternative that was studied is the most cost-effective, but in terms of construction cost, this is the most expensive long-term alternative. Alternative B was the lowest cost overall, both in the immediate relief and in the long term. It uses existing pavement on Railies Headquarters Parking Lot. It would enhance only the east-west connector pedestrian corridor. Railies expressed some concern when we did initial outreach to them about losing parking as they feel like their headquarters building is already underserved for on-street, excuse me, surface parking. This doesn't also connect the grid at Sixth Street. It just creates sort of like a drive aisle that serves both the Railies Southern Building and the Railies Headquarters in Welcome Grove Building. The alternative that we're recommending for inclusion in the HUD grant traffic analysis is alternative C. This reconnects the grid both at Sixth and Seventh Street. While rail relocation would be preferable, it is not required. A significant investment to create a new tunnel would allow this connection to occur. However, this alternative does not provide those additional bike ped connections enhancements as are seen in the other alternatives. As I mentioned earlier, we're seeking council's blessing to include alternative C in the HUD grant analysis, and we're also soliciting direction from the council at this time to look into implementation measures to deal with the existing constrained intersections. This is a diagram that shows what the implementation is for the recommended solution that council included in the report. But this, again, looks at the overpass bridge being triggered immediately and vehicular traffic shutting down. We have some additional grant funds that we could refocus to analyze two alternatives that allow vehicular traffic to continue to occur under the bridge in the interim until those overpass improvements occur. And we're asking council to give us direction related to refocusing those grant funds. And we're also asking council to let us know if they would like to see us move into like an engineering design cost estimate of any of these alternatives so we could come back for implementation measures. There is a million dollars that's included in the CIP item that will be occurring after this presentation, that we could come back and discuss the priorities as we see them for the HUD grant, including those cost estimates if council should wish. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Ledesma.
I have a question.
Mr. Kristoff.
Okay. In all of this, I did not see anything where the railroad is going to reinforce or fix the overpass.
When this analysis was done, it was assumed that the work that the public work staff had brought forward in April of 2013 was going to be eminently occurring. That timing is a little bit more amorphous, and I believe Aaron Laurel or Mike Lukin can speak to the timeframe for that. It appears that we have some more time to fix the intersection and allow the improvements to be sort of delayed in time because that wasn't the purpose of this study. It was to try to resolve that intersection, the level of service associated with it.
And the reason I ask that is because it really doesn't make a lot of sense to not have that overpass reinforced and fixed. And number one, if you allow cars to go in there, there could be, or go through there, I mean, there could be an accident, something happens if a train's going across. But the same thing happens for people on bicycles or people walking. That's even more of a risk. Why would we put ourselves in that kind of a situation? We should not be doing that. I mean, we've got to close it off. If we're going not to reinforce it, then you just need to close it off. That makes the most sense, I think. That's my two cents.
Well, in the, since Aaron or Mike won't step up, the issue of the overpass was not a public safety issue. It was to accommodate unit trains, heavier trains. And so if they're not occurring, we don't have a public safety issue with that railroad overpass.
What now?
Say, the issue of the railroad overcrossing is not a public safety issue unless we're trying to serve unit trains on that overpass.
Well, if they're sending a engine.
Yeah, but that.
Across this stupid, whatever it is, this bridge, then, I mean, it's just, we've just got to make sure that it is safe. I mean, those things weigh a ton.
Yeah, the issue is unit trains, and maybe Mike might say add to that.
Yeah, we did an analysis with AECOM of the bridge structure.
It shouldn't be us, it does it the railroad.
Well, we did it because we actually own the bridge. The railroad doesn't own the bridge. We acquired it when the county, when we were incorporated from the county, we assumed the ownership of the bridge. UP doesn't own the railroad.
Does UP pay us then for crossing through there?
It's part of an agreement that dates back to 1966 before the, before the city was incorporated. They have a right to use that bridge.
Oh, my gosh.
But in that study that we did, there was no documented issue with structural integrity of the bridge to people using it. It was, as the city manager indicated, it was merely a weight capacity issue that you couldn't have full railcars going over the bridge. You had to light-load those railcars in order to get them over the bridge. There was no problem with safety of going through the tunnel. In fact, in 2002, we did a, an upgrade to the underpass, which patched up some of the holes and stuff like that. So that was cured at that time.
Thank you, Mike.
So for me, and a continuous connection, pedestrian bicycle connection. So for me, and a continuous connection, pedestrian bicycle connection from the Tower Bridge, the waterfront area, that essentially makes links our downtown to the waterfront is really, it's, to me, that's one of the most important things we should be, we should be, it will look foolish twenty years from now if people look back and say, well, why did you not do that? That seems so obvious. So to me, that is a key priority among the alternatives, that it needs to do that. And in a way that, you know, like bicyclists could actually, bicyclists should be using that this this way, as opposed to going around Tower Bridge Gateway. They will, they'll pick the, you know, if we create a narrow pedestrian corridor, bicyclists will use it. And so we ought to just plan for that in advance, rather than assuming, like like we did on West Capitol, that folks would go over to Merkley and then come back, block over there. They'll take the path of least resistance. We ought to, we had a program in that making an amenity out of that that project. So to me, that that is a central objective. So I'm not sure the difference between B and C, I think you said C didn't really accomplish that. Is that right?
C would allow vehicular traffic, and it would be a shared, it would be a shared opportunity. So the Paseo would occur along the southern edge of the north-south road. It would not just be exclusively for bike-ped. There would be also vehicles on in alternative C, unlike alternative B.
What do we get for the vehicular piece?
I'm sorry.
What do we get? What's the, what are the benefits of the vehicular access?
So the benefit of the vehicular access, it exists in sort of the concept of how the project would be phased. It would allow us to create frontage for, in the initial phase, it would just create the easterly L shape before we had to make the improvements associated with the rail overcrossing or undercrossing. So it would create an L-shaped corridor, so we would get frontage on to Welcome Grove that doesn't currently exist, when Welcome Grove is ready to redevelop. And it would create additional frontage for Rayleigh's Headquarters, it would reestablish frontage for Rayleigh's Headquarters, but would narrow up the the travel. So it's in part to enhance redevelopment opportunity for Welcome Grove that wouldn't exist. It's so in the interim, that phasing would be allowed, and then, once the rail was either relocated, or there was an opportunity to find the substantial investment that would require for the tunnel, then additional opportunity for connection into Welcome Grove would be available.
So are you envisioning that as a, as a, as a regular street, or as a, what are those Dutch things called, the one, the wunervs? Or is it, I mean, is it intended to be a road? Or is it a bike and pedestrian facility through which, you know, cars have the ability to get, but that you, but it is not, is not principally a road? I guess, how much of a road is this?
Well, conceptually, when we, when we first envisioned this idea, it would, it would be sort of very locally serving in its interim phase, and as development came on board, that there would be the potential to sort of allow for more vehicular use on the site. The right-of-way on West Capitol Avenue, as it exists right now, that east-west section of West Capitol Avenue between the overpass and Fifth Street's actually very wide. In fact, there is a significant amount of encroachment into our right-of-way that's occurring from the adjacent buildings, and so there would be enough room to accommodate a Paseo on the southern edge and a locally-serving, low-traffic-volume street.
And that street would connect to this, but the street part, the car part, would connect directly into?
It would connect at Sixth, in an L shape, and then it would be a ride-in, ride-out on to Fifth Street.
But
Excuse me, it would connect at G, it would be a reconnection of Sixth.
But and then, but then it would go all the way into the Gateway Project, and you could get on, back on to West Capitol?
In the long term, it would.
With the expectation of cars would use that as a, as actually a through, a through alternative?
When the density, yes, required that, that it would eventually be a connection into the Civic Center.
But but at Fifth, it would still be right and right?
That's correct. So most of the traffic would be heading into the Civic Center. It would be not designed to be having eastbound traffic, mostly westbound traffic, funneling back on to Tower Bridge Gateway.
Mr. Ledesma, okay, yeah.
Go ahead and finish your thought.
Well, no, I mean, I, I don't really want a lot of, I mean, it seems to like fly in the face of the planning principles that we're trying to create here, in terms of more, more real, I mean, as an actual street, you know, car street.
We are balancing some of the policy objectives that are in this specific plan, which is part of the reason why we're checking in with council before we proceed with the fifty, sixty thousand dollar investment in the traffic analysis. There are policy objectives that say create and maintain a gridded network. Option C does that most efficiently out of all the other alternatives. At the same time, we recognize that when we were here with the Grand Gateway Master Plan, the council gave us direction related to a Paseo, as you spoke of earlier, that we wanted to enhance that east-west connection. When we took Grand Gateway forward, we kept in vehicular traffic on West Capitol Avenue, west of the overpass, and introduced parklets and enhanced bike pedestrian opportunities, but still allowed for vehicular traffic at, I think it was believed it was two-lane traffic. That concept would be then carried further to the east with these additional connections. So it would be very consistent with what was previously adopted with Grand Gateway, except that it would be just a ride-in, ride-out on to Fifth Street. But we want to make sure that the council has, still has a high fidelity to that concept, and isn't looking for us to go further with the Paseo concept, and really sort of try to increase those bike pedestrian enhancements, which is why we're here this evening, looking for direction.
Okay, I'm, I'm still concerned, I mean, I get that, but there's a qualitative difference between the vehicular access for the Rayleigh's property, which may not be the Rayleigh's property, and for the Welcome Grove, which may not be the Welcome Grove. So we should be careful not to anchor
Yeah.
Our fifty-year planning based on two, two land uses, both of which are evaluating their own futures. But there's a qualitative between providing access to that, to those properties, and creating an entire through facility for, between West Capitol and Fifth. And I get the grid argument, but this is a very bad place to be putting cars, I mean, this is already one, I think it's the worst intersection in the city. And not in terms of safety or anything like that, but it's, I mean, it's, it's the one I get the most complaints about. And so the more the cars that are even making a right turn out, if that starts to become an actual, you know, thoroughfare, it's going to put some significant pressure on that intersection, which it really cannot, it can't handle even today, and the Bridge District's not built out, and the Washington District's not built out.
Yeah.
And so
It's operating at a level of
It seems like it's, I mean, it's just, it's, that part of it is a nightmare waiting to happen.
You mean the one by the bowling alley?
The, yeah, if you look at the map, the one that cuts in front of Rayleigh.
But yeah, where Fifth and West Capitol and Tower Bridge Gateway all come together. And the fixed fifty stuff has certainly exacerbated that, but it's all, but it has been, it's, you know, you wait there forever, even with no cars, and then when the light changes, you have like five seconds to get across the street. And there's not, and it's, so it's, it is, it's a problem now, that intersection, because that's what connects the rivers and the Bridge District, and and now South Court, and our , I mean, every part of the city needs to get through that intersection in, in, in many instances. And so having that many streets that are carrying real traffic into it is just a massive problem. We're recreating what we have, the problem that we have, have Park and Jefferson and the freeway. So, Mr. Ledesma?
Thank you. I just want to kind of echo, I think, I think I see your, your point, and on, on, if B, alternative B is sort of the, it is the most true to sort of creating that walk, walking pedestrian bicycling corridor.
Alternative A also includes the Paseo concept, and does not have vehicular traffic on that section.
And, and, but it also, B also has, I'll get to that real quickly. And, and furthering the, the grid up north and south on Sixth and Seventh, in the long term. Alternative, on B. But but my point is, is, I'm going to agree with the mayor on, on the instance, I'm not going to discount car vehicles. I don't think it is a, there is no natural traffic going through it, except for Rayleigh's at this point, and the Malle Home Park. It's just, there's just, there's no natural right turn there, unless you're going to those two places. And so we shouldn't be facilitating that anymore, at least in my opinion. And my youngest daughter would agree with the mayor on Fifth and Tower Bridge Gateways, the worst intersection in the world, is we waited for five minutes for a light to go at thirty feet into the next light. Didn't make a whole lot of sense. So we need to kind of think about that and creating, because I think what the opportunity here is, and all your plans articulate this, is the ability for the folks at Capitol Yards, the folks from Rayleigh Field, to have a natural inviting Paseo, whatever you want to call it, that people can walk down, it's lit at dusk or night, it has little eyes on it. I know, we know folks that work at Rayleigh's, and I see them walking from Rayleigh's down to, down to here, whatever, just so they, they're walking and they're using it, and we need to kind of give them a pathway, other than sort of bypassing through the short tunnel and whatever else we, opportunities we give them today. So if there was a way, I'm not, I get the north-south grid concept, and furthering that, I'm not, I'm just not, I think we need to think a little differently about how those streets are laid out in a, in a more urban way that promote, promote bicycling and pedestrian traffic more than it does inviting a car. It should be pretty, you know, and, and I can't think of the more recent example than, it's actually shut off now, but on Constitution, is it Constitution? Pennsylvania in front of the White House. Or it's just that, it's just the walkway now. It used to be the roadway, and now it's just tourists and this, they're passing through, and bicyclists are passing through. It's inviting for people to take that path through there. So again, I'm just thinking of that would be a kind of grand walkway to kind of get people from one place to the other. And maybe cars are allowed, I don't, but it shouldn't, they shouldn't feel, be comfortable going there.
Mayor Protem Johannes.
Yeah, I, I agree with Councilmember Ledesma on the, so when we're looking at the potential future development, this, the tracks are here, and we do relocation, I don't know if we've discussed what, what is going to happen with that space.
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you, I apologize.
What's going to happen with the rail space once the tracks are moved? You know, we're going to have some, is that, you know, we haven't really talked about, is that part of a pathway, or?
Alternative A contemplates the rail being removed and a new road being constructed.
A car road?
A car road on, to the west, reconnecting what would have been Eighth Street at F.
Okay, so then, under all the alternatives, that would be an intersection at some point, going into Grand Gateway.
It would be a U-street, a U-connection, and there would be a universal street in the middle of that U-connection, and then a universal street to the east to capture the Paseo concept. Thank you. That would, that, what is, what's the alternative? Did you put it up there? That is the alternative that contemplates what would happen with the rail being relocated. The other two alternatives could allow the rail to remain in place with a significant investment in a, under, in a tunnel or an underpass.
Right. And so A really does limit access to the property where Rayleigh's and Welcome Grove is right now, except off of G Street, it looks like, and then a little bit on Fifth.
The long-term alternative has access to Welcome Grove occurring off of those new, those new streets, with new connections at F and G.
Oh, right, okay.
Welcome Grove would be served almost entirely, or what ever becomes of Welcome Grove, would be served almost entirely by a new street network. It would create new urban-sized blocks with Welcome Grove. All the alternatives do that, they create new urban-sized blocks for Welcome Grove, whatever it will become.
And this, the emergency access, that's just going to be a barricade of some sort?
Yeah, it'll be similar to the universal streets that are in the Bridge District. There'll be, there'll be bollards, frontage standards that limit the amount of vehicular activity, if there is any vehicular activity for like emergency services, or festivals, or food trucks, or anything like that.
All right, thank you.
All right, we did, oh, Ms. Endeen, sorry.
I, I tend to agree that building a pedestrian, bike-friendly pathway through there, and somehow looking at the alternatives that we have, that I think is ideal in our, in the long term. So I think for me, it would be A or B. I think those are the two, and I know that you've shared with us, the costs also do matter to us. I mean, I think we need to balance those out when we're looking at them. It seemed to me that you were looking for two alternatives to possibly contemplate and push forward. Is that, is, am I understanding the, the kind of staff request for this?
The staff is requesting that council give us direction on alternatives A, B, or C for inclusion in the long-term traffic analysis.
Okay.
And then also give us direction on what they would like us to return for implementation of an immediate solution to resolve that intersection, if that's what council so desires.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Kristof?
Katie, have we talked to the Collinses?
I'm sorry, I don't know who those
Have we talked to the Collinses, the owners of the Welcome Grove?
Yes, we had a meeting with them and with Rayleigh's, and we also had a public meeting where we solicited comment, and we met with some of the other surrounding property owners that came to the public meeting.
And, and what were their comments?
They expressed concern about the intersection. They, they very much were concerned about the city designing how the access would occur for their site, because they are in the process of marketing their site, and they did not want to appear to have the city carving up a large piece of property. We shared with them that this was at a very preliminary analysis stage, and that we felt that a developer who was interested in converting this into a, you know, sort of a high-rise development, would see utility in this kind of analysis being done and included in a specific plan. So I think eventually, they felt like there was utility in doing this, although they still had some reservations about, about sort of carving up their large parcel.
Yeah, well, I can understand that. I mean, for me, I really don't care what ones you choose. I mean, it doesn't, the only thing that I would strongly stress is that the railroad fixed the bridge. That, I think, is, is an absolute, I think that's a must. I mean, I realize it's ours, but they're the ones that's using it, and nobody else uses it. I don't take a trolley on there, we don't do anything else. So, I mean, I think that if we can find a way to get the railroad to fix the bridge, then any of the alternatives are going to be palatable to me.
All right, this time we want to request a speak on this, probably a comment, Mr. Lowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, William Lowell of West Sacramento, for the record. And as I stated before a number of times, I, considering the fact that the number forty and forty-one bus, when they go from the transit center to downtown, they go underneath the railroad, but they do not stop between the transit center and Fifth Street. And so I've been arguing for some time that they should, as they're eastbound, those two buses should take the same paths as the others, and make that first right turn, and then turn back on to Fifth Street off of Tower Bridge Gateway, and therefore, I think we should continue to allow the westbound forty and forty-one to utilize that section of West Capitol Avenue, and perhaps reduce the speed limit to, say, fifteen miles an hour, and just have one-way traffic going westbound underneath that railroad, and maybe widen the sidewalks a little bit on each side for bicycle and foot traffic, and, and maybe, you might want to discontinue that if later on, a light rail goes underneath there, or something like that, but that would be, that would be my recommendation, because to move the, to take the bus service out of there would make it very inconvenient for a lot of elderly and disabled folks who live in that Welcome Grove area and nearby motels. But, but right now, there's no stops for forty and forty-one between Transit Center and Fifth Street, so we should move those out of there and just have one-way traffic for, for bus service and other service, and, like I say, perhaps reduce the speed to about fifteen miles an hour. Thank you.
Mr. Lowell? All right, well, I'm distilling some of the conversation to, I mean, it's not a religious issue about car, no car, but I do, the, the, to me, the fundamentals have all been mentioned, which is have all been mentioned, which is, to the extent that there's, there's car traffic, it should be, it should be, it should be the exception. You should, if you have, if you're driving on most of this, most of this area, you should feel like you are a guest of the pedestrians essentially. And there's plenty of examples all over the place of, of design, you know, design, design strategies for accomplishing that. So it's, it's not something, K Street is sort of like that in Sacramento, but it could be, but more, but more than that, right? So that you've create, designed the environment so that it's not something you use as a primary commute alternative or something like that. But if you need to get to somewhere, you can. So I think that is a key, that, to me, that's a key principle. And the other key one is this, this conflict with the Fifth Street Tower Bridge Gateway. But that could be solved if the, if the, if you didn't have the connection at what is currently West Capitol, right? So you could still have a vehicular connection, for example, if you took option C and didn't have that, the, the part on the far, on the far east, the, the, the block between Fifth and Sixth, if that was not vehicular. So you could still connect using F, right? Isn't that F?
Uh, G.
Yeah, because, I'm sorry, yeah, you still connect using F or G into, you know, into the segment, but you would, but that would, that doesn't create the same kind of impacts on the intersection. So that seems, even like that's one way of solving, solving that. So you, you, it was, it essentially looked like the short-term of B, in fact, that, to me, that is the right short-term answer. All right, there, where, where the, you've essentially converted West Cap into a bike and pedestrian-only facility, but you've created, but you focus on creating alternative access through Six, Three. But in the long run, you know, may potentially, and, and, and I think potentially because it depends on what you, what the Welcome Grove does do and, and what the Rayleigh's, the current Rayleigh's property is, what they evolved to, you potentially could connect that by, connect it with a low-level vehicular access that's designed to give you access in and out, but with, that might have a through connection, but is still designed with, you know, very, very intentionally to not encourage any through traffic. I mean, it seems like that, that you could, you could achieve what we've talked about generally with a, with a blend of those, of those options. I don't know if that makes, you and Mike and Charlene are all nodding, so I'm hoping that makes some sense. Does that capture what we've talked about?
Revise the option.
Yeah.
Yes.
And then get the railroad to pay for the bridge?
Yes.
Or get Mike to accelerate the rail relocation and get rid of it altogether? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so is that, is that sufficient direction then?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Item seventeen is Presentation Discussion of Proposals Midterm Adjustments to the City's Adopted Two-Year Budget Ending June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen.
Mayor and Council always ask to introduce this item. Both Phil Wright and Carol done a great job in terms of engaging the department heads in this process. It's the first time we've had all our department heads participate in this. We've got council direction earlier in the year, general direction to take this trend to have additional revenue in the second year of our budget and be able to allocate it in four different areas. And Phil will go over that, but it's in employee concession reductions, improving service, finding some council initiatives, and then the fourth one would be to add some money to the reserves. So it's been a good effort. The allocations are consistent with that. I just want to really compliment Phil, the budget team headed by Natish, which is a great effort for, for our citywide staff.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll get the presentation up. So one of the principles that we got from the council and through our city manager was as the budget committee and department heads looked at the money that we had, to remind ourselves to continue to look for innovation and efficiencies and look for any reorganizational adjustments that we can make. So you'll see that that's all part of how we try to make the dollars go as far as we can make them go. This first slide, I'd just draw your attention to third column to the right. The bottom line is that our revenues for thirteen fourteen are coming in almost seven hundred thousand dollars above where the budget was, so that's fantastic. If you go down two numbers below, also just as fantastic is the department heads have done a great job keeping expenditures down, so we're five hundred fifty thousand below on expenditures. So we're ending thirteen fourteen in a significantly better spot than we thought we would. The bottom line is the middle column at the bottom, the three ninety-seven, eight eighty-five number. So we will end this year projected, we're a month away, so this is pretty close, almost four hundred thousand dollars in the black. That's remind the council that we were going to have a balanced budget this year using four hundred thousand dollars in one-time money. We now have a positive four hundred thousand without having to use any one-time money. So, very good news. Slide two shows you community development for thirteen fourteen. You can see that our revenues are below where we anticipated by about three hundred and fifty thousand, but our expenditures are also about three hundred and twenty below. Important to note, as Charlene, the department director has pointed out, there's a couple of projects that we anticipated coming in near the end of this year that look like they'll come in next year, so I'm not overly concerned that we're low on the revenues. We'll probably be high on our revenues next year is the hope. Bottom line is that we're about a hundred and five in the negative for this year, but it's a two-year budget, so not a huge issue. You'll note there's a larger number to the left, that's money that General Fund loaned community development during our bad times. And obviously, that as things turn around, we'll start to reduce that number. Next is the, sorry, looking at the right, right slide here. Next is the Public Works Engineering. Again, quite a bit below on some of the revenues at six seventy-five, but eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand below in expenditures. So if you look straight to the bottom right-hand corner, it's sixty-one thousand dollars in the positive. So that's obviously very good. The budget had us ninety thousand dollars in the negative. So Public Work Engineering has done a great job controlling their expenditures, and they also have a number of items outstanding that money has not come in, most particularly some Caltrans projects, where we're in the process of doing an ICAP, which is a formula you have to provide to Caltrans before you can charge them for some labor time. So there's a large chunk of money that, and Denex has been extremely helpful in getting us together with the Caltrans staff to understand how to get through the, the maze of the ICAP. So I anticipate that those numbers will be better in the second year. So all in all, General Fund positive, the other two funds doing fine. Road Fund is in the staff report, just point out on Road Fund. Our Road Fund does fine for fixing potholes and street sweeping and keeping the streets at a basic level, but we do have a challenge that we will be coming back to council with some recommendations on how to deal with the long-term capital issues because we really don't have any money for those right now. And that's an important message to, for us to remember. Moving into fourteen fifteen. So again, looking at our estimates, obviously now these are a little looser because it's a year, a year in advance, but we're estimating to come about eight hundred thousand dollars above budget on our revenues. And that means that we should end next year with about eight hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars in the positive. Now, before we get excited about spending eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we have to remember that we actually have two hundred and thirty thousand in additional revenues that are not in that number, but we also have two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars in POA commitments in the MOU that we just approved. And our insurance for workers' comp and general liability are going up a hundred and fifty-two thousand. So the number that we have that staff is proposing to use is seven hundred six thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars. So that's the, the number that we, we believe we have available for midterm adjustments. So this is the chart and based upon some good council direction. Earlier tonight, I changed the first column. It, it will read employee compensation adjustments and then service program enhancements, council initiatives and reserves. So when we come back, hopefully on June eighteenth, we will, and I, I think that was a good comment from council that really, as the economy turns around, the direction from council was to look to provide some additional compensation to our employees, as well as the service program enhancements, as well as some money for initiatives, as well as continuing to improve our reserves. So looking at the requests, just, I'm going to jump right to the bottom line. CMO and Administrative Services are asking for one additional FTE, but no additional money. They will absorb the cost of that with some reductions in other areas. Looking at the Fire Department, who also really done a fantastic job. I cannot compliment Chief Martinez enough and his staff for how hard they worked, on their budget. They're asking for one additional FTE, and again, no additional money, they're going to absorb it. One FTE in the hazmat program at about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, but as council will recall, a few months back, council approved some increases in rates that is going to cover that, so there's no impact to the fund. Fund has money in it now. The increase in fees will cover the cost of an area where there's some much-needed help. So those, I think those are fairly minor. Ninety thousand dollars in O and M. Essentially, the, the chief has looked and said, city doesn't have a lot of money, I'm going to ask for some O and M so I can keep things going. So you can see he's asked for some money in equipment rather, rather than buying a fire truck at seven hundred thousand, he's going to have his, his fantastic mechanics that do a great job, keep those things running for another year. So kudos to him. Police Department obviously has a number of items on the policy agenda that they have to address. And I think they, Chief McDonald also did a great job in, in showing a lot of restraint. The proposal is a sergeant to be funded through Measure K. Measure K, obviously, public safety is one of the items in Measure K. We believe with these additional items that council wants the police department to focus on, it's appropriate to spend a little bit more money from Measure K on that. We'll have a Measure K workshop next, so we can discuss that further. And then, as you can see, there's no extra FTEs. He's asking for a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars of General Fund. That's mostly to replace some, some grant funding, that might be the right word.
Is it grant funding, Chief?
Yes, thank you. Grant money, funding that he's losing, it's coming to an end, so he can hire some reserve officers again to help with some of these initiatives. And then some increase in, in overtime. And he's suggesting that we put a couple police officers through the academy program, costs a little bit of money. But recruiting police officers is becoming more and more challenging as people are starting to recruit again. And one of the ways of really securing your full staffing is you get some people in the academy, you get them to buy in that they're going to come work for you before they, you know, get lured away by other people. So we've done this successfully in the past and Chief and the HR Division have been working together. And that's the proposal for Police Department. Parks and Recreation, Bob Johnson has looked hard at how he can do some reorganization to provide services more efficiently and increase services. There's, it, over the years, his extra help staff has grown and there's only so much you can do with a few staff and a large number of extra help. And so in analyzing it, Bob is asking for three additional FTEs at a cost of a hundred and twelve thousand. Mostly a couple of people in the rec area where he's going to reduce his extra help or his temporary employee staff and have a couple more full-time people. We think that's a more efficient way to run some of his programs. And then a clerk position that we've really been, that department's been without almost anybody other than some temporary clerk help. And so we're going to, we're recommending a bit of an adjustment there. The next item, and there's actually a correction on the, on this preschool, it's not two-point-five FTEs, it's actually one-point-two-five. It's five teachers that are currently three-quarter time that Carol Richardson is proposing be made full-time. They have the money to pay for it. And like, if they're like my wife who's a teacher, they're probably working full-time already. Moving on to community development, the most important thing on this community development is Charlene is, is very clear that the engineering tech position she's asking for will only be filled when the revenues are sufficient to pay for it. Certainly believes that that's going to start happening. There's a, a huge ramp up in work, but we would simply put this person on the books and when Charlene says the revenues are coming in and Natish tells me that they really are in the bank, then we'll let her fill the position. So that's one position. And really, it's no cost because the revenues will offset it. Public Works Engineering, again, Denex also done a great job in restraint. He, engineering tech and engineering assistant is really what he's asking for. All of these are positions that he believes will be supported with the revenues that they will bring in. We're telling, we're holding them accountable for that. So there's really no funds and, no additional funds that he's asking for, for these positions. I will point out the treatment plant mechanic, you see an asterisk there. We, we have a situation right now where one treatment plant mechanic has resigned and we've got two others that are retirement-eligible tomorrow if they wanted to. This is obviously people working on our water treatment plant and in our sewer system, not people, these are highly skilled people. And so Denex is asking that we, we fill two positions and actually overfill by one, just to be, to make the training more efficient, so we can train two people at the same time, in anticipation that we have somebody who's going to be retiring. Hasn't said that date yet, but has indicated that there's an imminent retirement. And so we want to get two people trained more efficiently and be, not be caught with suddenly two people down or three people down. Finally, we have the supplemental requests. As you can see on the second to last page, supplemental requests are very minor. Again, mostly the police, the Fire Department that asks for no personnel whatsoever. They're asking for ninety thousand dollars in O and M basically to get through the next year. We're asking for the police sergeant from Measure K. Measure K cannot pay the O and M, so we have the O and M for the police sergeant. Chief McDonald would like to start the Kalia program and, and there's fifteen thousand dollars for the Kalia program in there. And then the rest of the money all gets offset. Kalia is a crediting program. I, I don't, I-
We used to be in it.
We used to be, we used to be, and I think the chief thinks that maybe not staying up with it has created some challenges, maybe some of the insurance increases. So.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, next slide is on this, my new title, the employee compensation adjustments. We're looking, here, you can see this is two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars that would go back to employees. For police, which has already been approved by council, that's the holidays, their ability to sell back some holidays. For Local Thirty-nine, who I'm currently negotiating with now, the Police Management Association are unrepresented, this would represent a reduction in the time off without pay, give them more money in their pocket, but would also give us more people to staff and get work done. So it's, it's, it's something that benefits both the employees and the city. So we're asking for direction on that. One-time money, as, as I mentioned at the beginning, we didn't have to use the four hundred thousand in thirteen fourteen. We don't, we're not anticipating having to use the two hundred and thirty thousand from fourteen fifteen. So we have six hundred and thirty, I put my glasses on, I can't read, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars in one-time money that we thought we were spending. And so staff is proposing that we reduce some long-term liabilities in reducing vacation caps down, which is a long-term liability. And if we pay it now, you pay it at people's current rates instead of their future higher rates. So sort of a pay lower now or pay more later. And so we're recommending that we reduce the caps by forty hours and then on a one-time basis, buy down the, to the, the, above, the people who are above the caps down to that new level. That would cost, if we did this for all the groups, about five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. And then we're left with some money one-time, which we put into reserves. And all the supplementals that I went through with council leaves us with about another seventy-five thousand. So we'd have around a hundred, well, as you can see on the next slide, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand would go into reserves. The employee, employee compensation adjustments would be about two hundred and thirty thousand, service programs about two forty, and then council initiatives about three hundred and thirty thousand. Those are mostly the council initiatives related to police safety. Obviously, the, the number, one of the critical items that the council has given us direction on. By the way, if you try to add those numbers up and then look under the report, it, it won't add up because we, we look at them differently when we're looking at the budget numbers versus, you know, they could be, for example, sergeant is being paid out of Measure K, but it's listed as a council initiative because obviously that's, that's why we're asking for that additional sergeant. So this time looking for direction, questions and/or direction.
All right. Questions or comments? Are there questions or comments coming, or shall we, shall we say, good work? And you know, a huge amount of time obviously has gone into, into this, but it builds off of the, of, of, you know, deep infrastructure of policies and practices and engagement by across the organization that's been emerging over time. So, and, and it is, as you said- that's been emerging over time, so, and it is, as you said, you know, really built, derives largely from our policy and management, and I know that the council spends a lot of time developing as well, so it's, you know, I think a lack of, a lot of questions and discussion is reflective of the fact that, I mean, at least to me, it looks like it's very reflective of our priorities and the work that the department heads have done to be prudent in their judgments, makes a lot of sense. I think we would all like to be doing more, you know, I look at each of those departments and think, I don't know how, you know, we will get to our objectives without more officers, without more folks, I mean, we're getting all these development applications, and community development is not going to have any more people, I mean, you look at each of those areas, and all of us, I think, will want to do more, we also want to make sure that we are being very prudent about our spending and not react to the, you know, turnarounds in the economy too quickly and too much, and also recognizing PERS obligations that are coming and a lot of other cost factors as well, so, you know, I think as we proceed, and if we have, you know, several years of revenues that are ahead of our projections, then we'll keep making additional investments, but, so, I think the needs are greater, for sure, in many of the, in all the departments, but I think the, for me at least, the work that's been done to try to contain the spending while also starting to make some investments again has been positive, so, and I'm glad we're not cutting.
You too.
After so many of those years of that, so, Mr. Ledesma?
No, I was just going to kind of leverage that point. First of all, thank you, Phil, thank you to the staff, the department heads for the work, because I think that's the, when I read the report, it just occurred to me, just, it's nice to see lots of plus signs or no parentheses to show the deficits coming in, and so, just want to thank you for your work and your diligence and kind of keep into the principles we started the last few years, which was let's be cautious, but as the city performs better, as revenues performs better, everybody will be able, have the chance to sort of move their organization in the right direction to kind of, as you said, to put the right investments into our staffs and to our people, so hopefully, you're starting to feel that a little bit now. I always get a little worried, like, oh, you know, plus signs or adding FTE, but you guys, it's been a terrific effort to be creative in how you can fund them and keep the budget in balance and actually on the positive side, so I just want to commend all of you, and thank you for being so prudent with our taxpayers' dollars and still managing to make our city go, as the mayor says, I know, and I've watched every year, your staffs amaze me, they do much for our city in protecting our city, or planning its future, or keeping its budget balance, so, and keeping us on track, so thank you, all of you, for the work you do, and this is a good adjustment to make, and I think it's a wise investment to make sure we're ready for the next year.
Phil, what's fund number 9016?
No, you can't check your notes, no.
No, 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 I, this is how I do this.
It's all the money from CFD 29.
Mr. Sharba?
9016 is just the activity code to track the expenditure for the department, for example, city managers.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
9016 is just the activity code to track the expenditure by the department, for example, finance is assigned 9052, city manager is 9016, or city clerk is 9022, it's just activity, it's not a fund.
Yeah, so in other words, it's Fund 101, but I'm in this, I'm in 9052, and he's in 9016.
Any further questions or discussion? All right, thanks for the work in the report.
I got one more.
Oh, you have one, yes, all right, so we're moving on to item 18, which is Presentation of Measure K Revenue and Disbursements in Consideration of 2014-15 Expenditure Plan.
So, in the past, Mr. Mayor and Council, we have not done a workshop on Measure K. Staff thought it'd be a good idea because there's some potential adjustments, and we did want to just drop those as a proposal with, you know, no chance to talk about them with you. So, here's what our Measure K scorecard looks like for this year, this is basically how we ended the year, and if you look in the middle column where it says projected, you can see that we're at about 2.9, almost $3 million in revenues, which is about, you know, close to $500,000 more in revenues, and so, if you work down on the expenditures, we're about $344,000 in the extra money, so to speak, in Measure K for this year that's not spent. And if you look down at the bottom, we have almost $3 million in essentially accumulated money. Over the course of the year, we spent most of the money, obviously, but we haven't spent all of it, and we've sort of built that up, so we want to talk to you about what to do with that as one of the items for you to give us direction on. The next slide is the traditional slide that we show you to show Resolution 0258 and Measure J, how the council divvied up the money, the percentages that were supposed to go to the various items, and then actually showing what so far has been spent on those items in this, again, in this year. So, and then the last slide, or second to last slide, is the full scorecard that we traditionally give you, and it's a little more complicated, I know, but let me just explain how it works. On the left-hand side, you'll see dollars and percentages, so the percentages were arranged, so for example, the water rate reduction was supposed to be somewhere between 27% and 31%, or somewhere between 562% and 675% a year, so that's how that works. So, the key things here are to look at what we have actually appropriated in each of these areas, so the third column over from the left, the actual appropriations to date, and you can see that while we were supposed to have appropriated 27% to 31% for water reductions, we're up more in the, we've appropriated more in the 38%, and if you go to the far right, which is the actual expenditures, it's even, it's in the same thing, 38.2, so we've certainly spent more money on the water reductions than was originally planned. Conversely, if you look at road maintenance, it was supposed to be the same, 21 to, I'm sorry, 27% to 33%, if you look to the last two, the two columns in the orange, you can see we've only spent 18% and 16% on road maintenance. Now, it's important to note that council front-loaded a lot of road maintenance in the capital portion of the Measure K, but that's all spent, there's no money left there, and so, we certainly have an issue, as I mentioned earlier, as to how we get more money into the road fund, which staff has a proposal on part of that, and we'll come back to you with a, hopefully with a bigger proposal once we sort it out. So, really, and then you look down at the light rail, which was light rail at the time, it's now streetcar, and you can see a big goose egg, as they say, in the actual appropriations, whereas we should have put in somewhere between 1.1 and 2.2 million over the course of the history of Measure K, and the mayor has reminded us at Measure K time that, you know, he sees that, and we have to make sure we take care of that, so. Going to our last slide, the council, staff is seeking direction from council on three items. Number one, we have this $3 million, we're proposing that we take the 2.241, and we put it into the streetcar. We have it, it's just been sort of building up, and we've put nothing in streetcar, streetcar is certainly coming to a fruition very quickly, we're going to have to get the money somewhere, it seems like that's an appropriate place, seeking direction on that. We have $740,000 in addition in reserves, staff's proposing we just form sort of a Measure K reserve fund and keep it separate from our annual money, and seeking direction if council likes that idea, if they have specific areas that they would like it identified for, for example, it could be roads, it could be something else. And then finally, we are, actually, there's four things, I just left one off the slide, but I'll give you number three, and then I'll give you the one that's on the slide. So, number three is, we're going to have, it looks like about $400,000 to $500,000 more every year than the 2.5 million we originally thought we would have for Measure K. Staff is proposing that half of that go to streetcar, because that's what we need every year to keep the funding at where the level, and that the other half be assigned to roads, so we start to build up, even though it may be small, 250,000 doesn't do much for a road, but you can build up over time and hopefully get a little pocket of money. And then finally, staff is seeking permission from the council to go out and study some alternatives to the way we are doing the water rate reduction right now, to try to bring it down in line with the 30%, while staying true to some of the philosophies and goals of the council in having the water rate reduction to start with. And we would come back to the council in September with some alternatives for the council to consider, so that's the direction we're seeking on Measure K.
Kristoff?
Yeah, on that last one, I guess one of the areas that I would probably like to at least see explored, and that is the $3 reduction that people are getting, in my opinion, is very important, especially for the residents that we have here now. And one of the overriding circumstances and all that is, we know we're getting a $3 hit from sewer, and to have an additional $3 in water taken away, I have some issues with that. But I could say, let's take a year, pick a year, 2012, and say, anybody that was a resident, owned their home, did whatever it was, 2012, they get the reduction, new people coming in, they've never, it's not like you're taking anything away from them, so if you took 2012 as a cutoff and use that to take that $3 reduction that would normally go to that household, or business, resident, whatever, and use it for, at least put it in possibly road funds, because our roads are, one of the overriding issues that Measure J and K tried to address was roads, that was our first priority. Anyway, I mean, something like that, I mean, it would be fairly palatable to me, so, take something like that around.
Yeah, I like that idea, and Measure J and K is like, at least for Mr. Kristoff, I mean, it's a religious issue, we made a commitment that it was going to be for these purposes, and went to the community, and the community, you know, voted, they'd never voted for anything like this before, they rejected a bunch of school pods, I mean, they just had not been in an investment mindset, and they agreed to this program, so we've been very, you know, very protective of making sure that we deliver on that commitment, and the community's been very supportive of follow-ups, you know, as a result, I think, because we've done what we said we would do. But the, part of the theory of Measure J and K in the first place was to try to improve quality of life and stuff in our community that we could not, that could not be solved with, you know, could not be solved with development impact fees, so particularly focused around the needs of the existing neighborhoods and residents, that this was the, you know, the best opportunity that we had in order to do that, and that's why a lot of the focus here is on, is on those services, was on replacing the roads and preschool and library services, the kinds of things that are essential for basic education or for economic opportunities, so that frame, as opposed to, it's just a pot, it's not just a pot of extra money, it's not a, sort of a general fund subsidy in general, it really was for the purpose of sort of, this is the, this is the impact fee revenue essentially for the existing neighborhoods, and so, that lens, I think, is so important, which is why thinking about the, you know, that time thing makes a lot of sense to me, because it's, I mean, this is a problem, that if our population keeps growing, if our population grows faster than our sales tax revenue grows, it's the water piece of Measure K is going to keep getting outsized compared to what we agreed to, so, and there isn't any, there's really no value for it in that sense, so, you know, we build, we build bridgeway lakes or the rivers, and we say, hey, you're getting a water rate subsidy, but it's what you were already paying anyway, so, so I think that's, and we have a major problem on the roadside, so I think that's worth, that's definitely worth exploring as a potential alternative, and of course, I do appreciate that we're truing up, all the streetcar stuff that you've described is just truing up where we were supposed to be, and so that makes sense, and it's the right timing now in order for that to happen. You're not proposing giving interest, but that's all right.
No interest, sorry.
We don't have that much extra money, so I appreciate, I think that it's a good, it's a good plan. Mayor Pretam Ledesma? I'm looking at you, and he's got his hand up too. Mayor Pretam Johansson?
Yeah, no, I think it's a good plan to, you know, to get on, get our streetcar balance up there, get ready to go, because that is coming in pretty quick, and, you know, on the water subsidy, I'm totally in agreement, that these are some of the things, you know, improving streets, those types of things I think are what we said we'd use these funds for, and we're doing it, so I think it's a good plan.
Ms. Endy?
And I agree with my colleagues, I think it would be helpful to come back, though, with additional thought about the water, the water refuse rate reduction, because on the face of it, it sounds to me, the first, my first reaction with a date was Prop 13, for some reason, that's what came to mind, and so, I think, well, I think it would be worth talking about or thinking about, but I'd love to see that, what it might look like in some projections, before jumping in with both feet.
I think we'll come up with some different years and show you the impacts of them, and let the council debate and give us, when we come back, and some other potential alternatives. We obviously haven't thought this through, we just wanted to, we wanted to ask the council if it was okay before we started investing time and trying to figure out alternatives. We'll try to come up with, as we traditionally do, you know, three or four alternatives, and...
There's even at least two ways of thinking about, I mean, Mr. Kristoff may have something more specific in mind, but, I mean, you could, it could, and they have different financial implications, but it could be, you know, a transfer basis, you know, but it could also be a place basis, right, so this, you know, the, any new, you know, any new developments, any new construction from this point forward, those properties are not eligible for the reduction, that, you don't save as much that way, so, you know, you don't get as much money to transfer to roads, but I think we, if you came back with a couple of different options for how to approach that issue, that would allow us to, you know, to explore and to try to write, achieve the right balance, it would be helpful.
I don't think you get a, matter of fact, I know you don't, you really don't get an awful lot of money upfront, I mean, it's going to take, it's going to take a couple different developments to get going and to be in place before you really realize a, an amount of money that's really worth talking about. So, you know, I mean, I know we've got one development out in Southport that is fairly ready, I mean, staff is working on it, and everybody seems to be working on it, and, you know, we don't have a development agreement, or we don't have anything yet, but at the same time, we will, and so, it's, when those kinds of developments, or the bridge district development comes in place, or, once they start to happen, that's when you'll start to generate enough money to fill a pothole, but to start with, I don't know if you've got enough...
We have the money for the potholes.
Yeah, I don't know if you've got enough to fill a pothole yet, but, I mean, it's, you know, so...
But we'll give you opportunity from one extreme to the other, so that...
And Mayor, if I couldn't counsel, just to underscore this issue of roads, particularly major road rehab, this will just be one component, while Measure K is key, it's local money, we're looking at the legislature right now that's debating the issue of truck wait fees and so on, and so, when we come back, and Denix is red-hot on this in terms of, you know, come up with some sort of a comprehensive game plan for roads, so it just wouldn't be this portion, and we know in the short term, if it was linked to a change of ownership, it's going to be a small amount, but we're going to look at other ways to leverage this small amount, maybe it'll be a position us so we can get a little bit more, if it's the funds that are distributed generally on a gas tax formula, there might be a way where we could use this as a match and bring more into roads, but we know we've got a big policy issue there, and that's coming.
Maybe we could save $60,000 from a homeless coordinator and put in...
Sure, Ledesma?
Oh, I'll leave it at that, I am supportive of the plan, and, but more so, just on this last point of, you're looking at it, because I think we want to get into this mode now, where we are thinking about these type of policy issues, we're getting surplus money, and it, we, you know, the mayor is exactly right, we should be thinking about projecting out 20 years from now about how we allocate this, because it is for them that we're doing that, so, and we should be, we should be adjusting to, or thinking towards it, so I applaud that you're, you don't know what it's going to look like, and I'm okay with that, but I don't want to get too, is that we're sort of getting ourselves to where we, we didn't think about it, but we got to...
to where we, we didn't think about it, but we gotta spend it. So we have a major roadway that needs to be repaired, you know, how we're gonna allocate those dollars, and we just, I think it's just that time that we start to think of these things in advance, so.
Well, what's exciting is, we've been using one-time money to balance budgets and avoid layoffs. We still have some one-time money, and so we're looking at how do we use that one-time money now to leverage other money to, to get, accomplish the things that council wants us to accomplish. So we will come back with some options.
Well, we've got a, you know, you know, you've got a capital improvement program that we're gonna talk about in a little bit, and...
Right now, I hope.
Right now.
And, you know, I mean, you know, there's issues with our fire department, there's issues with police department. I mean, so each one of the departments also need to get a taste, or, you know what I'm saying? Everybody needs to be, get something and, and try to keep everybody as happy as we can.
All right. Thank you. That brings us then to item nineteen, which is Presentation and Discussion of Proposed Midterm Adjustments to the City's Adopted Biennial Capital Improvement Project, Program Budget Ending June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen.
So all I would like to do is thank Natish publicly and all of the project managers. He's done a really fantastic job this year, working with all of the major project managers throughout the year to try to really fine-tune how we stay on top of our capital budget and how we provide information to council. So Natish?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Natish Sharma with City Finance. On July seventeen, two thousand and thirteen, the city council approved a five-year CIP. If you remember the five-year CIP, the first two year is adopted as part of the budget, and the next, the last three years are part of the plan. Today, we are here to seek direction from city council on the proposed modifications to the current approved budget. This slide illustrates, currently, we have about, the table at the bottom, forty-two million dollars in approved project budget. And this, and basically, the way we're funding the forty-two million dollars is some existing fund balance, impact fees, bond proceeds, grants, and federal and state, utility fee revenues, loans for the funds, Measure K and Measure V. The loans from other funds are primarily from Measure G Fund to Traffic Fund to advance the, the construction of the Mike McGowan Bridge, and this loan will be paid back from the future impact fees collected from Southport. So some of the major, and as you could see, this, this chart illustrates a balanced sort of CIP. We have projects in water, we have projects in sewer, CFDs, rehab and replacements. This is the replacement, basically the depreciation that we collect on each of these service districts, and we are improving the infrastructure over there. Parks and Recreation, Facilities, Transportation, Bridges and Roads, the ten point six million in Bridges and Road is primarily the, the construction of the Mike McGowan Bridge. The Bridge District includes the streetcar portion of, Bridge District portion of the streetcar and a couple other projects, and Measure K and V is the streetcar design portion. The flood improvements on this side, if you see fifty-two point three million, that's not included in this budget, but we do present a capital budget to the WSAFCA board, and which we're planning to do sometime in July. So the current biennial CIP, this list basically illustrates some of the major projects that we are working on, that's either on the current or previous council strategic plan. Attachment A of the staff report has a detailed list of all the projects, but this list basically illustrates some of the major projects we are doing. It's approximately fifty-six percent of the current approved budget is just all projects right here. So going to supplemental request, we are requesting fourteen point nine million dollars in new request. This is actually, you know, very minimal compared to some of the other years we used to do CIP. Right now, in our request, we only put project in our, in our current budget if we know we have money, or if we have identified revenues, or also if we have any grants that we already have in, on hand. If we have anticipated grants, we put those projects in the, in the plan, and then if we get the grants early, we actually come to council, come before council, and move the project into the budget. The major transportation bridges and road in this seven point eight million, this actually is the construction of the Village Parkway extension from the bridge, Mike McGowan Bridge to Stonegate. And General Community Special Tax Measure G Fund, you actually have seen these projects before, and this list actually illustrates a lot of this project. Number of this, actually, all of these projects are on the council's strategic plan. Either these are the infrastructure improvement projects, or money we are asking council to prove to provide grant match for some of the key projects we are currently working And in traffic, if you could see, the Village Parkway, the six point two million, we are requesting to continue the construction of the, the connection. So the last, this slide actually illustrates, one of the things we are also doing is looking at our three-year, three-year CIP plan and making adjustments to it. It's not a lot of projects in here at the moment, because this is just a minor update we're doing, but the major, two major projects, if you see on here, are the Pioneer Bluff Plan Implementation and the Copier Relocation. For two thousand and seventeen, we're, we just estimated number twelve point one million. There's no real calculation behind it. And the other one is the police station replacement. We actually first, we actually are asking one hundred and twenty-five thousand in two thousand and fifteen, so this money will provide us to do some analysis of site, and, and then the sixteen money will also help with that, but seventeen is when we are hoping we could start construct, design and construction. This concludes staff's presentation. I'd like to thank all the project managers, the department heads, steering team, and the city manager for the guidance in, to put together a comprehensive CIP budget and plan.
Thank you. Are there questions? Mayor Portem Johansson.
Natish, on the, the rec center concrete repair, that seems pretty substantial. Is that a, is there something, is there an issue going on there?
Yes, at the rec center, the, the leisure pool, the concrete is, is wearing out, so this money is three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars will help us, and this is the, the leisure pool is owned by the city, so this is to fix our pool, and so we're gonna use a new product that I believe we tested out to make it surface, make it better. So right now, I think Bob Johnson could provide more in-depth discussion if you want to.
Yeah, the question was really just if that's, if it's an abnormal lifespan for that asset or not.
We don't, we believe it's abnormal. We have been working with the contractor, with the school district, with the, the original architects. We believe there was an issue initially when the concrete was poured. The contractor debates that. We've all been working on a solution over the last four years. It's gotten to the point now where we, we've not come to a real good solution. We've identified some products, we, we poured some test, some test panels. It's at the point now where we believe that we're at risk of someone getting hurt, if someone falls on it due to the deterioration. So we'd like to begin with a panel replacement program. It's actually gonna mean that we tear out the four-by-four panels and actually redo those with a, a concrete epoxy product that we hope is gonna hold up. The contractors agreed to help to some degree. The arch, the original architect has agreed to help to some degree. Nobody's taking full responsibility for it. Again, it's been something, Carol's been involved. This has been something that's been going on for a long time. We just need to get it done, because we're, we're worried at this point that someone might get hurt. We're also working with the school district. We'll work with the school district on their side, because we are partners. That's a, that's a shared use facility that we partnered with them in. So without going into a whole lot of detail, I'm happy to provide more detail.
No, I think that's fine. It's just, is this the whole cost, and you're expecting some kind of contribution back, or is this...
Yes, we're hoping.
Yeah. All right.
Questions? So, and I'd like to, one, is the dock, the Rayleigh's Dock, in this program at all?
Yes, it is in this program, and it's coming in front of council next week.
Okay. And then on the Washington Firehouse Rehab and Reuse, it's, it's scheduled in the, in the very last year of the plan. So I understand, we don't have funding, so I understand why it's not in the budget, but it's, it's actually several years after the Washington Infrastructure, and it's after other projects that are allowed. So what's, what was the thinking beyond, for scheduling that that far out, as opposed to, say, in two thousand and fifteen, sixteen?
I think Aaron Laurel may be the best person to answer that.
I'm trying to understand the question, actually. So the firehouse is one of the, the property acquisition for the firehouse is in...
The property management, longer range management property.
Right, for, for the current, or the upcoming fiscal year, but there isn't anything for the actual...
There's a million dollars in, for the Washington Firehouse Rehab and Reuse, that's in the capital budget plan for two thousand and seventeen, eighteen. And it can't be, it can't be in the first couple of years, because we don't have a funding source identified, but it seems odd, given the infrastructure, that we have, we have scheduled in the Washington Infrastructure earlier than that, and we have, you know, live development interest, that we would have it that far out.
Yeah, and actually, that's, I apologize, I didn't actually know it was in the, in for seventeen, eighteen, I think. The plan was for the infrastructure allocation of one million dollars for fourteen, fifteen, and then another five hundred thousand the following year. That money would be put towards design. Potentially, some of that infrastructure design work could be the infrastructure that would benefit the firehouse. That's actually money that's available through Measure G. I think the allocation that you're referring to, it, it may be in the plan, but there's no actual funding for that at this time.
So we can certainly move it up in the plan?
Yeah, we can, we can accelerate it, but just to be clear, there's no...
Right. Yeah, I'm not proposing to move it into the budget. It'll still be in the plan, but it just feel, it seems like it should, it belongs in the plan earlier.
Okay.
Right.
Makes sense. Is that, Laurel, is that all part of Washington Gateway Infrastructure?
Yeah, the, the recommendation for the million dollars for the Washington slash Gateway Infrastructure is meant to fund design work and other activities following up on the, on the Sustainable Community Strategy. So the main thing in there would likely be designing infrastructure for that gateway project that you saw earlier, maybe other parts of Washington, and then any other activities that are deemed necessary over the next year or so to follow up on that plan.
So, yeah, that has a, it has a million for that in fourteen, fifteen, but it doesn't have five hundred thousand the year after?
Um, I thought it did in fifteen, sixteen. It should have one million next year, and then five hundred the year after that.
Oh, okay. But maybe if, if we move the other one up to then, then you'll, then you'll have it.
Natish, help me out. My understanding was, at least in the Measure G funding allocations that we're looking at, it'd be a million for fourteen, fifteen, and then the other five hundred thousand would be fifteen, sixteen. And that's primarily, when you, when you sum up the projects and the amount of money available in Measure G, it really comes down to a cash flow issue there. There's just, we, we would love to move up one point five million this year, but the way the money flows, we're allocating it out that way.
Yeah, sure. Okay. Are there, any other questions or discussion?
I'd, I'd just compliment Natish. Natish, you did a great job, and I know Phil, through Phil's leadership and all the rest of the, everybody that has contributed to it. I mean, I know all the department heads have had their say and, and done things, and this is, um, this is pretty good. It's not bad.
All right. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Council calendar, Ms. Richardson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to point out a few things that aren't on your calendar. This Saturday, the Allstate Insurance will be having a grand opening of their office at, at Lake Washington Boulevard, and just our fire department's gonna be out there with a fire prevention trailer, and the council had previously received an invitation to attend that, if you so desire. On June eighteenth is gonna be a busy day around here. The council meeting time is, is misprinted there. It's the regular seven media, seven PM time, but at four thirty PM, there's a Tommer Grand, Grand Opening, and again, you should have received invitations for that. The district attorney, from six to eight PM that night, is going to be having the information session here at the Galleria on the neighborhood court, so residents who are interested in possibly being a panelist or a facilitator in the neighborhood court could, could attend this particular meeting. We've been helping them with advertising and getting the word out. On the, the following day, on the nineteenth, at five thirty, there's the I Street Bridge Open House, which is gonna be at the Stanford Gallery, Gallery across the street. And then on the twenty-sixth of, of June, is our second dig-in dinner with, which I understand council member Ladesma is gonna be the celebrity chef, and the Broderick Road House is gonna be the, the restaurant. That's it. Thank you.
Any questions on the calendar? City manager report?
Nothing.
City attorney report? Staff direction from members of the council? We have no future grand item requests, so necessary motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Then moved by Mr. Ladesma and seconded by whoever the clerk decides. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing done, motion carries, meeting is adjourned.